We went into executive session at 5:00 PM to discuss a number of issues. The only one that has come to fruition here is that we've come to an agreement with Mr. Skiavi for a 90-day extension of his contract under the same terms and conditions as previously prevailed. With that, I'd like to have us all stand to speak this pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag. To the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first off, any staff comments or announcements?
We worked it out, don't worry. Karen Bowden, Director of Cultural Affairs. And tonight for our public comment about our program update, we wanted to take you on a journey in time. To start, on November 19th, the 204 will be heading back to 1956 when the big band era was sweeping through the nation. Grab your best attire and your dancing shoes and come down to the 204 to see the Glenn Miller Orchestra in concert. This dazzling performance will give you the best of the Glenn Miller Orchestra with its unique jazz sound and smooth vocals. This performance is one for all. With a 3:00 PM show and a 7:00 PM show, you have two opportunities to come in and kick back in time as we celebrate one of the greatest orchestras to tour worldwide since the late 1950s. Tickets can still be purchased in advance online or at the door. Now, we're going to go back even further in time, so hang on tight. We are now back in 1843 with the setting of the Victorian age where the life between the poor and the wealthy were very distinct, and those within the working class worked hours on end in factories, mills, and mines for low wages while the wealthier class lived a life of luxury. In order to challenge the appeal of one's worth, a misguided and misunderstood individual by the name of Ebenezer Scrooge was visited by four ghosts to help shed some light on the man he was, the man he is, and the man he has yet to become. By now, we've all mostly know the story and have been told how our friend Scrooge ends up. But now imagine sitting in a room with the lights all around you and the story known by heart is about to breathe around you, sing around you, and move all around you. The Capeness Arts and Spectacle Production Team is hard at work as they bring together the immersive retelling of the Charles Dickens' A Christmas Carol. The adaptation that the guests will be delighted with unfolds by candlelight and will make the 204 Theater feel like a Victorian London setting. Come in for the nostalgia, stay for the story, but enjoy the performance. For the spirit of giving, all tickets for our Christmas Carol shows will be $10 per ticket to make it as affordable and fun for everyone to enjoy us. They're all general admission, and we have a special opening night on, I like to say, Thanksgiving Eve, so the Wednesday before, at 7:00 PM. And we'll have shows to follow Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then Sundays. Be sure to join one of these many opportunities to see a stunning display of theater. Now, we're going to come back to 2025, and we are back with our holiday market, and we're very excited to announce that yet again, we are back on the first Saturday of the month, December 6th, from 10:00 AM to 4:00. During the market, we'll be welcoming our friends from the North Pole, Mr. and Mrs. Claus, along with their handy elf helpers. And then we also have our friends from the Kingdom of Arendelle. For anyone who knows Frozen, that is Elsa, Anna, and Olaf will be coming in for a meet and greet again. We will have face painting, a balloon twister, arts and crafts, letters to Santa, and more. The 204 artists will also be available for open studios with various demonstrations, archival sales, and more. We will be joined by over 40 outside vendors throughout the building. This event is always our premier event and our crowd pleaser, and we hope to see many more join us and new faces around the halls. Anytime, you can visit 204 online at 204system.com for more details or pop in my office at any time. I hope you enjoyed your journey in time.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if no one else wants to...
Sure.
I just want to remind the public, I will be holding office hours this Thursday, November 13th, from 8:30 to 9:15 here at Town Hall down on the lower level in the library by administration. And I'm going to say this now because there's more people probably listening now than later. Congratulations to Montmore Regional Field Hockey. Final Four, another unbelievable run, and they play on the 13th as well at 5:00 PM. So, go Sharks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Well, I'll take the same opportunity. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and there will be a Veterans Day observance at Evergreen Cemetery at 10:30 in the morning, and our own Tony Skiavi is the featured speaker. So, everyone comes out. It's quite a spectacle, and there's been quite... Robin's done a heck of a job putting that cemetery together, and it's really a showpiece right now, so I invite everyone out. Hopefully, that will mean no rain. All right, any other staff announcements? Moving along, then, weekly briefing.
So, no real significant updates related to One East and Two West. That's the area around Pleasant Bay Road, Standish Woods, and Route 39, and Priscilla Pines. Just to let folks know, they will be working tomorrow on November 11th, Veterans Day, but they will not be working on Thanksgiving Day or the day after Thanksgiving. So, that roadwork there continues, so no major changes from last week. Nothing new on Great Sand Lakes Sewer Extension for the Route 28 Dry Pipe. They opened the bids last week. We're still hopeful that Mastod can get a contractor onboard by November 30th. We did get notification late last week from SRF that our SRF package was approved for this project, but remember, it's contingent upon the November 30th contract date. So, right now, there's no bets out there right now whether they can pull it all together and get a contract signed by November 30th, but we remain hopeful, and we'll see how that goes. As far as the Brooks Academy Museum, that'll contract will be discussed at the end of the agenda for signing. I know I was asked related to a schedule for that project. The original schedule was set to start on September the 15th, so we're a couple of months behind. I anticipate, once we get it signed and get them onboard, we'll ask for a new and updated schedule, and certainly one of the asks will be, are there any areas in that schedule that can be compressed to make up any of that, you know, lost time as we try to negotiate a contract with the designer and architectural firm? So, we got there, but it did extend things out a little bit. So, we'll look to see if we can compress without increasing our overall risk on the project.
Okay. As to Brooks Academy, I know you know this, but the public has some concerns. It is the 250th anniversary of the founding of the country, and so there was some real urgency to making sure that we had the place open because that's our signature building historically. Also, picking up on what you said about Great Sand Lakes, because some people are expecting, like, an in-depth report every week. The next real big critical milestone is the end of June. We're working towards that. You come up with a construction contract that'll satisfy the state, but everything's on target. There isn't anything that between here and there that would be a red light to anybody in the public.
No, and we're working on a milestone chart for that project, too, so we can have some visibility into, you know, what are the tick marks that need to get checked off between now and June 30th, so.
Okay. I was just trying to make, give everybody an assurance that no news was not bad news, that we're actually on it. So, all right. Any questions for the Town Minister? Hearing none, we'll move forward then. Public comments and announcements. John.
John Carey. I live in Hyannis, but I have some properties in West Harwich, and I want to give people some updates on the projects. I feel like I owe it to you guys. It's been quite a bit of work, and so I want to give you some updates. The West Harwich Schoolhouse is complete. The seven market rate units are filled. We have a chef from Harwich, a Harwich Elementary School teacher, a painter, a hotel employee, an electrician, a carpenter, a project manager, a nurse, and then a retired town employee. So, seven of the nine people living there are people that work in Harwich. So, if people ask who's going to live there, it's going to be people that work in Harwich. The three affordable units are still waiting on the housing lottery at the state level. Part of the delay was, I had hoped for a 30-year GID restriction, just so you could try to put some financials to the project, and the town ended up asking for perpetuity, and I agreed with their reasoning. I didn't want to set a precedent because of the lack of clarity early on, and so we're going to move forward with perpetuity, and I appreciate the town's support doing it, and Tony's support as well. Also, I want to thank the Building Department. I know you guys are talking about permits tonight. It took me 51 different permits to build these 10 units. I was probably a bit of a headache for the department, and I appreciate them sticking with me and seeing it through. I also want to thank Planning, ZBA, Historic Health, Water, DPW, Fire. The police came twice for potential break-ins, and then one of my favorites, the Select Board, who helped me quite a bit. I also want to recognize the Harwich Affordable Housing Trust, who partnered with me, and then obviously CPC, who partially funds this project as well. They basically recognized the potential of this project, and they chose to support it when they didn't have to. They created real results in a time where it's extremely hard to do that, so I appreciate both those boards. Next project, West Harwich Square. It's the two lots next to the church. Took quite a bit of time to design it appropriately. I feel comfortable with where we're at, and I'm going to be starting entitlements for that next month, and I look forward to working with the town on building something you guys want, as well as something I think will help you guys. Finally, the West Harwich Baptist Church. That's a big one for you guys and the entire town. As of, I guess, two months ago, I entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the church after the predecessor backed out of the deal. My understanding, all along the way and watching it from behind it, I spent three years behind the church working the school, was the town's goal was preservation, and I'm proud to share that we're now on a path towards that. The church... The church has represented and supported this community for 184 years. It's three years older than the Brooks Academy. I think it might be one of the oldest landmarks in Harwich. So, this building, I spent the last two months in it. It's absolutely rock solid, and as of last week, it's as clean as this room is here. So, any question about the longevity and how it was built and whether it's going to collapse is, I would argue against. I've put together a three-phase plan to restore and preserve this structure for the town and for, you know, future generations, and we're going to bring the same level of craftsmanship that we brought to the project behind it. So, one of the reasons I'm here is because two months ago, I asked, or I submitted an application through CPC for Phase Two funding, and I know it's a significant amount of money, and I want to ensure the community that if they decide to support it, that they're going to get a product that they're very proud of, and it will be there for another 100 years. So, the meetings, my presentation will be on December 11th to CPC, and I hope all the people that have fought along the way will be able to come to that meeting and show the support and get us moving on this path to restoration. So, thank you for your time and support.
Any other public comments? Okay, so you've done, we'll move forward, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the resignation of Amy Jalbert on the Voter Information Committee effective immediately.
Second? Okay. The only question I have with... That one was... Yeah, it's the second one I'm concerned about. All right, any further discussion concerning the first resignation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the resignation of Robert Thompson on the Cemetery Commission effective January 1st, 2026.
Second? Okay, and I'm just going to say this because by inference, I see that it went the right place because it's stamped that way, but anybody who wishes to resign from a board that they were already on, just be it known that you take the same path as when you were appointed. The last place that you went to to actually be seated anywhere was the clerk's office to take your oath of office because the interview committee interviews, they get recommendation to the board, the board votes to do that, but you're still not capable of serving until you get sworn in. If you choose to resign, you turn that all back around and you start with the last person you saw, which was the clerk. You don't resign to your board chair, and you don't resign to the Select Board. You resign in reverse order from the clerk backwards. So, just to make that abundantly clear to everybody. Any other comments about the resignation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I move we vote to accept a gift for the Council on Aging from the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging in the amount of $5,000.
Second? Moving seconded to accept a gift from the Friends of the Harwich Council on Aging in the amount of $5,000. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.
Just a quick question, and I vote aye, but I see the recommendation, it has a specific recommendation. Does that need to be part of the motion?
It probably should be encumbered in the manner that it was presented.
Would you like me to remove the second, or...
Who made the motion?
Mark was the...
Okay, yeah, remove the second.
Remove my motion?
No, he has to remove his second first.
I'll remove the second.
Remove my motion?
All right. The motion just has to encompass that, for the purpose as presented.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we accept a donation from the Friends of Harwich Council on Aging as presented in the amount of $5,000.
For the purpose.
For the purpose as presented.
For the purpose as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Yeah, finally.
Finally. Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Select Board meeting minutes from November 3rd, 2025.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval of the Select Board meeting minutes of November 3rd. Any changes? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. So, moving on to public hearing.
Do I just read that? You should have something in the packet.
You should have something to read.
Something to read in the packet. There it is, right here.
As he's doing that, just so everybody knows, a hearing is different from a public agenda item. It's published in a newspaper, and when we start off hearing, you pretty much, you need to be able to say what the newspaper said and when it was printed. So, with that, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, notice is hereby given under Chapter 138 of the General Laws as amended that an application has been made to this board for a change of classification for the on-premise all-alcohol liquor license held by Blue Stripe LLC, DBA Cape Seagrill, Jennifer R. Ramler, Manager, 31 C Street, Harwich Port. Applicant is seeking to modify their liquor license from annual to seasonal. The Select Board will hold a hearing on the application on Monday, November 10th, 2025, no earlier than 6:30 PM in the Don B. Griffin Room at Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, at which time all interested parties will be heard. Remote access is also available. Please see posted agenda for dial-in information. Signed by the Select Board, the local licensing authority.
And published in the Cape Cod Chronicle, October 23rd.
23rd, 2025.
Okay, so I'm going to open up the hearing. Is there someone here representing? Hi.
Hi.
You can sit here if you want.
Do you want the butters?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. How you doing?
Doing well.
Okay, so, I mean, it looks pretty straightforward. Do you have anything you want to add to it?
Not at all. And if there's any questions from the board, we can answer them.
Yeah, for the public's edification, the seasonal licenses have somewhat expanded, so...
So, for the seasonal license, you have to be closed January 1st to March 31st.
Yeah, but my point was, they used to expire in November, and then if you wanted to stay open longer than that, you pretty much had to have an annual cleanup fix-up and ask for permission to close, so I get why you're doing it. You don't need permission to close. As a matter of fact, you have to close for that period of time.
For that period of time, correct.
So... All right. Any questions or comments from the general public? This may be one of the faster hearings that we're going to have. I'm going to take a motion now to close the public hearing so we can deliberate.
Mr. Chair, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Back onto deliberation. Anybody should make any comments or a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion for discussion, Mr. Chair. I move that we approve a change of classification application for Blue Stripe LLC, DBA Cape Seagrill at 31 C Street, the manager Jennifer R. Ramler.
Second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the change of classification for the license. Comments?
I'll let him free time maybe.
None here. Good to see you'll be staying with us, though.
Oh, yes, not going anywhere.
Okay. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I mean, if you want to sit outside for an hour and just pretend we were having a long hearing, you could.
We've been through enough of them over the years.
But you're free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, update on the town meeting and budget timelines.
So, just a couple of things to bring to the board's attention. Couple of things are turning red, not anything that's in our control, so we're still in contact with DOR, hoping to get our free cash certification imminently, but until we have that, it kind of holds up a couple of other things that we're actually working on in terms of creating our free cash analysis report. But we're working on, all the budget reviews are starting this week, so all the departments have had their budgets into munis as of today, and so I'll start those budget reviews Thursday and Friday this week as we go through each of the budgets, one by one for each of the departments. So, all of that is currently on track and in work, so.
All right, questions, comments, the Town Minister? I've just, I have an interest, and you know that, and so does the board, to just make sure that we stay as close as we can in front of the deadlines because they were always in the charter as drop dead dates, and they're not waiting until the last minute so that you get the information of the Finance Committee a week before the town meeting.
Yeah, all of those are on track or ahead of time. These are more internal, you know, things in terms of what we're doing, you know, internal to that. So, all the charter bylaw-related stuff is all moving forward well ahead of schedule.
And from this point of view, I anticipate a much more collaborative process this year with the Finance Committee. We're going to be working with... I did not say that. You could infer that from it. You folks have any... You folks have any questions about the timeline? Okay. All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If you would indulge, I don't know if anybody is here or online regarding new business item A, which shouldn't take too long. If we could take that out of order?
Oh, yeah.
That way, they can leave if they're here. Mr. Chair, I move we approve a special permit application for Joe Young, Fourth Big Sound Production LLC for Entertainment, and a one-day liquor license, wines and malt, for an event to be held on November 19th, 2025, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the 204 System.
Second? Okay, so we're moving seconded to approve the one-day liquor license. Mark, you had a question?
I just had one question. Will there be liquor in the auditorium where we have new seats? Where will the liquor be served? I have no objections to it. I just know we have new seats in that auditorium, and I just was curious where it's going to be held.
Yes, so historically, we have allowed people to bring their beverages in. If we get a wine spill or anything, we clean it up right that evening, so we haven't had any issues, and up on wood, we won't, but, I mean, we are certainly capable and ready. We do have extra pieces and parts of the project, so if something gets severely damaged or we're not able to fix it, it's, you know, very saturated. We have pieces we can actually fix.
Just out of curiosity, since you brought that up, the pieces and stuff, I'm assuming that when you do an event like that, you would have some sort of indemnification clause in the contract anyway.
Yes, so on the event application, they do sign off on the town's indemnification clause, along with the use policy of the facility.
So, if something untoward were to happen?
Right, and they also do, when they purchase their certificate of liability for the day, because they have to get an event show liability and a rider for the day, they also add their alcohol insurance, and the bar service provider that they hire for the event also carries liability insurance. So, both have, it's basically $6 million worth of coverage, so if anything happens, we can get what we need.
John's sitting there with his head shaking. They don't need 41 permits. All right, with that, any further questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving back. All right, joint meeting with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, if you want to call them, your folks in order.
Certainly. I'm Bob McCready, Chair of the Harwich Finance Committee, and I do have a quorum present. I have Tina Games, Dana DeCosta, Peter Hughes, Mark Mieres, and myself. For a quorum present, I have Scott Norm, I believe, on the screen.
Yeah, he's here. And Jennifer.
Mr. Chair, if I may just give a little preamble here before Jen Mintz goes on with the presentation. So, I think, as I mentioned as a lead-up to this, this isn't a presentation the town has received in the past. It's one I've used in both of the communities I worked in. You know, we finish out a fiscal year, we close the books, a lot of paperwork going on behind the scenes, but we never really take the time to go back and analyze our financial performance and analyze, you know, some of the data. Now, it's history, but history can inform the future, right? So, it's not necessarily predictive, but we're using a lot different analytical lenses this time around as we prepare to, as we prepare the FY '27 budget. And so, the data that we typically look at is something we wanted to share with the board and the Finance Committee as we, again, begin to do our deep dive analysis and preparing for the next fiscal year's budget. So, this is an important piece of that, and I hope you find it informative and perhaps something that'll continue on in the future. So, Jen Mintz, our interim Finance Director and Town Accountant. The show is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Tony and members of the Finance Committee. I am Jennifer Mintz, and I currently work for Eric Kincherf, who is your appointed interim Finance Director. Very happy to be here, and I hope this overview that I'm about to give you leads you to the same conclusion that it led me, looking at fiscal year '25. Harwich is in great shape, great financial condition, and we're working to position ourselves well for the future. And I will review and highlight specific areas, particularly focusing on revenues, expenditures, debt, reserves, and our financial policies. So, first up, we're going to focus on, sorry, excuse me, some milestones. Our AAA bond rating was recently reaffirmed, and basically, that's an important validation of our financial discipline and our credit strength. And why it's important for municipalities to have a AAA bond rating, it gives us lower borrowing costs, it illustrates a strong financial reputation, and it builds community confidence. And it's no small feat. It's certainly something that takes a great deal of dedication from an expertise and strategic insight from the finance and management team to accomplish this task. So, kudos. Harwich has showed balance and sustainable budgeting, and total operating expense budget for fiscal year '25 was $77.8 million. $45.7 million of that was for town operations, $32.1 million being for school operations, and it was offset entirely by projected revenues. And then lastly, we continue to maintain and adhere to strong and conservative financial So, first, we're going to focus on revenue. This is a little bit hard to see up there, so if you need to print it or see it afterwards, it might be better to refer to it on a larger screen or printout. So, these are the highlights from fiscal year '25, and let me just break it down for you a little bit. So, first of all, our total revenue budget was just over $80 million for fiscal year '25. Our actual revenue came in at $82.7 million. So, basically, that gave us a surplus of about $2.6 million, resulting in funds that we closed to free cash. In addition to, a portion of that total revenue, forgive me, was transfers in from other sources. There were two buckets of those transfers, right? There was transfers in of roughly $2.3 million that helped to fund our operating budget. And additionally, there was about just over $2 million of funding that funded special articles within the warrant. Total transfers in from other funds and sources totaled about $4.3 million. Local receipts, another important bucket for us. We budgeted $15.2 million for local receipts, and we actually received $18.3 million in local receipts, resulting in a $3.1... $3.1 million over budget situation, or received over our budgeted number. State aid was slightly above budget, this is our, one of our smallest buckets. And key drivers of our surplus, aside from taxes, strong local receipts were by far our outperformer. We, our divided local receipts, particularly with the tourism economy, continue to play a vital role in what we do. And the impact of all of this, in the end, we closed $2.6 million, as you can see in the bottom line there, to our free cash. So next up, I want to talk about the major sources of our general fund revenue. First up, largest and most reliable source of revenue by far is property taxes. That trend did not disappoint in fiscal year '25, we had just over 71% of our total revenues in property tax revenue. Again, largest and most reliable source of revenue, and it's subject to limits of Proposition Two and a Half, plus new growth. Next up, state aid, it's very small. It's also called cherry sheet revenue, and it includes various items from unrestricted general government aid, veterans' benefits, so on. Local receipts is our second biggest bucket of revenue, and it came in at about 22% in fiscal year '25, includes excise taxes, hotel, meals tax, service charges and fees, and these showed a pretty healthy bounce back post-pandemic. Other sources, they're kind of compiled together there, and that 5.3% include transfers in from other funds or sources, delinquent tax revenue, and other miscellaneous receipts. So you're going to find, one of the things I like to do is illustrate things with visual graphs. I think that when presenting financial data, spreadsheets, numbers on a page can turn into a complex, you know, group of numbers that are hard to see trends and understand where we're going. So I like to put pictures together that give you, your mind a different relational value of what we're talking about when we're talking about numbers. So these visuals make the data more accessible, they support transparency, and they help everyone focus on what's driving the changes, so not just numbers themselves. Here you see illustrated the size and importance of our overall tax revenue. And secondarily, although smaller than tax revenue, you also see how large our local receipt revenue is of our total pie of revenue for fiscal year '25. Next up, I want to talk a little bit about new growth. New growth as defined is extra property tax money that we can collect because of things like new construction, major renovations, or other physical changes that add value to the tax base during the year. It's remained relatively steady with a little pre-pandemic lull and reflect an ongoing investment in property development within our community. Next up, debt exclusions. So our net excluded debt service is the amount of money that a city or town pays each year for certain big projects and voters approved to be outside of the normal limits set by Proposition Two and a Half. So this has remained relatively steady, but I will say it does take effort and time to smooth that so that there's less impact over time. So next up, I'm going to talk a little bit about cherry sheet revenue, and although, remember, I've said this is a very small revenue source for the town, but I think it is a good, good item to illustrate. So it represents roughly 1% of the town's overall general fund revenues. Cherry sheet revenue is money that we receive from the state each year. It's called cherry sheet, sorry, anecdotally, it's called cherry sheet because it used to be printed on pink paper, and it's remained relatively flat over time. Fiscal year '25 state aid came in close to budget, showing accurate forecasting and management. So again, illustrating the state aid in total, this illustration shows you the four buckets that Harwich receives for state aid revenue for cherry sheets, and you can see that the largest piece is the unrestricted government aid, which is great because that is funds that we receive with no strings attached. So that's good. This slide, very similarly, shows you those same four buckets, but it does so over a five fiscal year period with a kicker of a fiscal year '26 budget in there to kind of just show you the numbers that go into that. And then I illustrate it, oops, went too far, here, where you can see the buckets broken out in the bar chart, and you can kind of see the performance has moved in ebbs and flows over that five-year period, and has gone between $600,000 and $900,000 in that Local receipts, this is a big and important area for us, so I want to talk about that, you know, as you can see, most of the categories experienced strength in fiscal year '25, but I want to highlight and talk about a little bit more, go a little more in-depth on those top five dollar revenue categories. So we're going to focus a little bit on the top one, recreation, which includes beach revenue, golf revenue, dockage fees, things like that, motor vehicle excise, which is a yearly tax that Massachusetts charges on most registered vehicles based on the value of the vehicle, solid waste fees, which is primarily transfer station revenue, other department fees, that is largely ambulance fees, and rooms tax, which is taxes, local taxes that hotels, motels, inns, and short-term rentals collect when you stay overnight, it's added to the bill, and then sent to the, and then sent to us when the property is located within Harwich. As pointed out earlier, the local receipts had a budget of $15.2 million, they came in, we actually received $18.3 million, resulting in $3.1 million in excess revenue over our expectations. So shocker, I'm again gonna, oops, sorry, I went on line again, my bad. I'm going to illustrate to you again in a pie chart, basically, I want you to look at those top five right there, and look how huge they are, how big of a portion of our total local receipts those represent. Just a good, good illustration to show you. So this one feels a little overwhelming, but bear with me, I'm going to walk you through what I've done here. So first of all, I want to start with the gray boxes in the center. Those gray boxes in the center show you the top five that I've been talking about, those top five categories. They've represented between 74% and 84% of total local receipts for the past four years, right? So what you see here is, from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '25, you have budget and actual, and then on to the next year, budget and actual. So they're huge, they're a huge part of our total local receipts. And then secondarily, I wanted to talk about the blue boxes at the top, which basically, those, those represent a year-over-year change in our budget. So basically, it illustrates that our budget went up, it went down a little bit, went back up, and then the yellow boxes at the bottom show what our performance was, budget versus actual, so you can see that we outperformed across the board between 17% and 30%. These are just little tools that we can use particularly on an analytical perspective to say, you know, are we keeping up with what's actually happening when we're budgeting and being responsible and making sure that we're meeting, you know, we're actually budgeting for what we're, what we're seeing.
Through the chair, if I can just make a comment on this, because this is one of the areas that we talk a lot about. So one of the takeaways from this, when you look at the blue boxes in terms of how much our revenue estimates change from year to year, it's relatively small, but our actual performance versus what we estimated is rather big. And this is an area where we need to focus and refine our estimating skills to better capture and look forward for future, you know, revenue estimates, because we're estimating, perhaps ultra-conservative when we want to be conservative. So this is one area that Jen and I have talked about that we'll be focusing on in the course of our, you know, budget development and revenue estimate development, so.
And I think notably, too, we've discussed, you know, keeping a keen eye also on the fact that we don't want to go too far with that, right? Like, there are, there are free cash policies and things of that nature that we don't want to kick ourselves into solving one problem to create another. So next, we're going to go to our general fund appropriations, expenditures, and assessments. So this chart, much like the revenue chart, shows you a complete breakdown by bucket of our expenditure budget for fiscal year '25. As voted at town meeting, the town general fund operating expenditure budget was $45.7 million. The school operating budget was $32 million, that's both combined, and then there was other non-operating general fund expenses of about $1.4 million. In total, in actual revenue, we received for the town $43.2 million, and we were $2.2 million under budget, which again, gets returned to free cash, closed to free cash. And the school closed at $32 million, in line with estimates, and the $1.4 million in additional costs also in line with estimates. So in fiscal year '25, the budget totaled $79.2 million, it was up 6% from the prior year. We turned back, as I said, approximately $2.2 million, and that was largely from salary savings in unfilled, some unfilled positions and operational efficiencies. Notable turnbacks included the police department turned back $329,000, the fire department $243,000, group insurance $124,000, and highway $453,000. Turnbacks like this show that departments continue to manage their budgets prudently, returning unused funds to support free cash and future stability. So another chart here, I'd like to show you that illustrates the buckets, and the largest by far is education, and that's both, both schools included, both Cape Tech and Montemoy. Public safety is 15%, just the two of those alone represent 57% of our total general fund expenditure, total expenditures. Cherry sheet assessments, so we talked about cherry sheet revenue. On the other side of cherry sheet revenue, they also assess bills to us that we have to pay back to the state. So taking that small slice of revenue that we have, a lot of it goes right back to the state. Cherry sheet assessments is money we pay back, pay back for shared costs, things, an example, county tax, air pollution, regional transit, so on and so forth. In fiscal year '25, our assessments totaled $880,000. This, again, is a bar chart of our assessments over that five-year period, showing you that they're continually steadily climbing, but still remain a very small and offset a very small portion of our revenues. Debt service, briefly touching on debt service. Fiscal year '25, our total debt service was $5.7 million. We did no new borrowings in fiscal year '25, however, we did do a new borrowing in early fiscal '26 that was for previously appropriated funds that had remained unborrowed. So this chart's pretty fun.
Before you go on, because this is a theme that's recurring for all of us, and I want the public to understand this, there is that lapse period, and the public isn't always aware of it, they get a bill in January, it's like, well, what the hell? But that may very well have been something that was approved at a town meeting one, if not two years prior, by the time we get around to actually incurring the debt by a borrowing. So just so the public gets that, that's, there is a time lag. So when they see that, it's not because we've gone crazy and started spending a lot of money, they pre-approved that at a town meeting somewhere.
Correct, yes, absolutely, good point. So I wanted to, Tony and I talked about this, and we wanted to illustrate debt drop-off, right? So essentially, what that means is, if you look at this chart, the dark blue at the bottom is your principal payment, the orange at the top is your interest payment, combined, those come to a total, right? So your fiscal years are at the bottom going out to fiscal year '28, or '48, pardon me. So what you see is, you see a spike up when there's borrowing because our debt service, the amount that we have to pay out, goes up, and then you see these drop-offs happen. And what is that? So basically, that means that at that interval, there were borrowings that we either paid off or that had been on a declining scale, you know, or a combination of the above. So I wanted to illustrate to you, you know, the goal is to kind of smooth this and make it a little bit less of a up and down situation. We do have funds that have been approved but not yet borrowed, so we could layer those in in a way that we could illustrate, you know, what it might look like if we borrow unissued debt. Didn't get to it in time for this presentation, but it's certainly something, obviously, that we can layer into this. But I wanted to just talk briefly about this particular chart. In fiscal year '32, you see the largest drop-off, and that totals $889,000. That's from four borrowings that complete in fiscal year '31, that include the recently borrowed fire and, fire, department ambulance and fire engine, Cranberry Valley Golf Course irrigation, irrigation system upgrade, and I'm really sorry if I butcher this, I'm new to Harwich, but Skin acquit, road betterments, is that correct? Excellent, okay. So the next largest is in fiscal year '30 totaling $634,000. This is largely due to the police station completing their borrowing payments in fiscal year '29. And third, and important as well, $474,000 in fiscal year '33. This is five borrowings that are rolling off. Sacquetucket, did I say that correctly? Harbor Master Building and Boardwalk One, Sacquetucket Marina Improvements 1A and 1B, Cranberry Valley Golf Improvements for the parking, and road maintenance for fiscal year '22. And otherwise notable in fiscal year '26, even though you do see an increase overall, there was a roll-off of road maintenance fiscal year '17. So there's always ebbs and flows, right? We may borrow, but we may have some that are, that are rolling off, and it's, it's part of the job to illustrate or to make sure that you're trying to smooth that over time.
No, go ahead, Tom.
No, I was just going to say, we developed this chart, I think, you know, the key takeaway, especially with the visual, obviously, is looking at the spikes, right, and trying to smooth this out. Because you look for strategic points in this graph to go, when would we want to do the next major borrowing so as not to create the spikes on the taxpayer? Now granted, we have authorizations to borrow that we haven't executed yet, and so we're looking at putting gray areas in there, so you say, well, gee, we got a drop-off here, but if we're not considering something that we borrowed previously that haven't, or authorized to borrow that we haven't borrowed yet, we need to know what that might look like. And so we're trying to figure out how best to actually display that so that...
You will be a hero to many if you do that.
Well, that's what we're working towards.
And before you go on, Jen, because there are a couple anomalies, and I just, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around this myself. In golf, when they assess membership fees, there's a bucket, and it's unlike a lot of other stuff, and it doesn't go into, it's not a revolving fund, it's just set aside so that it doesn't, in my mind, over the years, as much as I've looked into it, it's never enough to actually pay for the full borrowing, but it's enough to be able to each year cover the cost of the payments for the bond. So the question is, is this, when you're doing this, is this a net amount, or is this the whole total borrowing, borrowing amount, and you're offsetting it somewhere else?
This is total.
Okay.
This is total.
Irrespective of the fact that they've got a dedicated stream, they can push towards that.
Correct. I didn't take into account where the money's coming from, just the fact that this is the debt service.
Okay, I just wanted to ask that question.
Yep.
Sure.
Absolutely. So next, I wanted to just briefly touch on excess levy capacity. So obviously, that is the amount of property tax that we could legally raise under Proposition Two and a Half, but chose not to for some reason. In fiscal year '25, that amount was only $139,000, that's pretty narrow. It's projected in fiscal year '26 to be closer to about $717,000. As we get closer on some of the reporting coming up, we'll have a little bit more clarity on what that looks like going forward. Lastly, I want to touch on our financial policy, compliance, and other funds. So this writing's really small, I'm going to give you the brief and dirty. So, this writing's really small, I'm going to give you the brief and dirty. Harwich continues to meet or exceed its financial policy benchmarks. Free cash in fiscal year '25 was $5.82 million, which represented roughly 12% of operating budget, well, within policy goals, which are above 10%, and with a goal of 15%. Stabilization in total was about $10.5 million, which is 13.5% of operating budget, and that was across the general stabilization, housing stabilization, and wastewater stabilization, also within, compliant with the policy. OPEB trust, $6.77 million balance, and there was an annual contribution in fiscal year '25 of $500,000. The policy calls for a increasing over time amount, but obviously, a larger amount was, was contributed in fiscal year '25, and then was required. So, that's, that. In summary, I want to just say that this demonstrates largely, in my opinion, that Harwich has a continued commitment to responsible budgeting, efficient operations, and strategic financial planning. The conservative approach has positioned them well for the future, ensuring that Harwich can sustain services, manage infrastructure needs, and protect taxpayers. And Harwich is in good financial shape as a result of this presentation in fiscal year '25. And we're positioned well for the future. It, it illustrates the hard, the hard work of town management and finance and, and this board, and it, we're working to position ourselves well for the future. So, with that, I'm all set. If you have any questions, I am here.
Well, first, a comment for, for both of you. This was an excellent presentation, and I do hope that you memorialize this, and this happens every year, because you can't know where you're going unless you know where you've been and how you got there. So, thank you for both, both of you for putting this together, it's excellent. I'll start with the board, but I also anticipate the finance committee might want to ask some questions. Board members?
Just have a question.
Mark, sure.
By the way, excellent presentation. Dazzled, that's all I could say. I, I just did notice on page 23, it shows us, like, the debt is going down. Is that actually incurred debt? In other words, we're not seeing the, the upcoming wastewater debt that's coming?
You're only seeing what's actually been borrowed.
Exactly, because
Yes.
I would anticipate that will change quite a bit as we progress in the
Yeah, and, and we talked about building that in, and like, showing a gray area where you can see, just in, in time, I didn't have time to get that in for today.
Okay, and I, I don't expect that, but I
Yep.
That's something coming up. Just one final question. The tax levy decrease this year was $753,000. I, it just, conceptually, it just seems like the tax levy would go up every year, and do you know why it went down $753,000? And if you don't know the end and now, you can
I, off the top of my head, I don't, and I don't want to guess.
Yeah, okay.
I could, but I, I don't want to do that.
Okay.
Can I get back to you?
Yes, please. And that's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Sure. All the members?
I'll make a couple of quick comments, maybe a question. I'm not looking for any real debate on this tonight, anyway. My comments, just want to throw it out there, but, you know, we talked about local receipts, and whether we're too conservative, or if we're conservative, subject to debate, right? But I'm just curious, and again, we can discuss it in the future, when, when you stop presenting budgets, but, I think one of the things we talked about last year, and one of the rules of thumb that we've heard with, you know, through, through various entities, is the 90% rule, right, when, when you talk about the, the certified prior fiscal year, so the one that we're currently analyzing, basing next year's receipts, 90% of that number, right? So, what was it, 18 and change, so we're looking, looking at roughly like 16 and a half million. Is that the thought process that you, you've been, you've operated on in the past, or do you think that number is too conservative? And again, I'm happy to have this discussion in a few weeks.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, you often find, I mean, I, I take a more, want to take a more analytical approach to it. I mean, it's not exact science, so there's some science, but there's intuition and there's gut, right? So, there's various ways to look at that. I'm not as much a keen to just take an arrobed mathematic of what it's going to do 90% if the data, right? So, the data can not necessarily give you the answer, but it tells you what questions to ask, right? And so, as we look at estimating our revenues in the future, you know, I'm not of the opinion you just take the number, go 90%, that's what we're doing. If the data is, and we're comfortable saying the data's showing us something different, and then we explain that, and this is how we arrived at, at the number. So, I think it's a balance between, between the two. So, those are sort of, I'll say, conservative practices, but there are times when you break the practice, because you have information and, you know, smart people that are looking at it, saying, "No, we can do this."
Sure. And, and, and not to speak for you, but one of the, one of the factors could be something, an adjustment in fees.
Correct.
So, all of a sudden, you may start at that 90% number, but based on the other calculations, you're going to
If something new comes in, absolutely, you have to.
Okay.
That's why we do that, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And again, I'm not saying it has to be that, that percentage, I just, to me, it, it's a conservative approach, but it's also an approach where we have no idea what the hell the future brings, right? So, you don't want to just assume the glory days are always going to be glory. So, you, you build yourself some form of buffer.
Yeah, we're reading the tea leaves.
Right, exactly, exactly. Just, just a comment on the cherry sheet, because I always laugh about the cherry sheet here. It's nine grand, that's what we walked away with.
Yes, that's eight, eight.
Yeah, so thanks, thanks to the Commonwealth. And, and, you know, we can joke about it, but there truly are other communities in, basically off Cape, who rely heavily on the cherry sheets, right? That, that bolsters their budgets and, and allows them to survive. Over 90% of, of how we operate in this community is on our taxpayers and our, and our visitors. So, that, that's truly how we pay for, for business. I'm really looking forward to those gray boxes on the debt schedule, I think that's going to show us, you know, where we're heading with some clarity, so I appreciate that. And interested, and, and again, we don't have to get into it tonight, but that's 700K on the levy capacity. I thought we were tighter than that when we put the budget together, so I was, I'm surprised when I saw that number tonight, but, again.
I'll circle back on my numbers and get back to you.
Yeah, but I appreciate it, great presentation.
Thanks.
Both of you, appreciate it.
Nice presentation, though, thank you very much for the both of you.
Mark?
I'm all set. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Jennifer. Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
And like Pete, I'm not going to go too deep into this, but I do, I do have a question, and I, I'm, I'm excited to ask it. You know, we've, we've talked already about being maybe a little too conservative, and maybe throttling back and just being conservative. What is your opinion on, on the free cash number?
Of what it's going to be?
You know, I, there's two schools of thought. Free cash, some will say, is too high. Some will say free cash is just right. I'm looking at this data, and, and through last year as well, I see that, you know, the, the best practice is for free cash to land between 10 and 15%. We're at 12.7% at $5.82 million. What's your opinion on that?
Um
Sorry to put you on the spot, but I've been waiting to ask somebody else
No.
This question.
I mean, it's obviously an important part of what we do, right? It provides funding that's, that's important for, it's, it's a conservative approach that gives us room in our budgets, but on the flip side, it gives us that, that available pool of money to accomplish very important work. So, it, it's, it's tough to say, because I always feel like a, a policy exists because you want to set minimums so that you're, you know, sustaining that, that whole idea of what your rainy day, you know, kind of bucket of funds is. But if the, it, it, there's also this breaking point where the, the policy is, is dictating the work, and becomes like the tail wagging the dog, if you will, will. So, I think it's important to keep it conservatively high, but I think, to, to Tony's point, I think it's also very important on the flip side that, you know, you're budgeting according to what you're seeing, and what the trends are telling you with that buffer built in, that conservative buffer built in. So, I don't think 10% is bad, I think that there are scenarios in which it could seem like a lot, but I, I don't think it's bad.
And, and how a town chooses, and this is for a later conversation, but for how a, a town chooses to use its free cash is a whole nother conversation
Yes.
To, to have. You know, at the end of the day, I think, Tony put it best, we're reading the tea leaves. We are a, a town that relies heavily on 99 days of people showing up here and spending an awful lot of money, and it's, it's not an easy forecast, not an easy prediction.
Right.
So, you know, I, I, I look at, at, you know, free cash being between 12, 10, and 15%, and we're, we're right at 12.7. But again, thank you, I just wanted your, your opinion on it.
Can I add a comment to that, just
Yeah, sure.
Real quick, I think, because, and this may help with, with the question. So, one of the things that I think we get driven into sometimes, and we have spirited conversations about this, right, so they're the gatekeepers, right, but I'm more of a bold thinker on, on, on things like this, is that we have to be careful about letting a number drive us into a situation where we artificially cause stress and constraint on ourselves, right? And, and free cash can do that. Free cash isn't free, it's a terrible name, we should call it something else, it's not free. And so, you have to find that nuance there, because it's money that could be used and spent on operations, and, you know, right now, we have elective bargaining agreements that are expired, and we're trying to work on that. We have nondiscretionary accounts like healthcare, Barnes &amp; County retirement, utility costs, right, that are going up at a rate faster than our revenue goes up. And so, I always look at it to make sure that we're trying to find that sweet spot, at the same time, we're not artificially constraining ourselves. So, at the end of the day, what happens, say, "Well, general government will just constrain." And that ends up affecting, you know, we have layoffs, you have programs that you have, you can't fund, right? So, I think it's always that conversation we should have to figure out, you know, it's not a too high, too low necessarily, but it's to make sure that we're, we're putting the proper analytic, analytics to it, both as we're estimating our revenues and expenses, and then looking at the performance on the back end, to see where we can potentially make adjustments to still stay healthy on, on the free cash, and what that does for us in terms of sustainable budgeting, but at the same time, allows us to make enhancements and other things in our operational, you know, program. So, it's, it's a little bit of both, but I think sometimes we, we glom onto the number, and that potentially drives us into, you know, a negative decision-making process. So, we're having these conversations now to see how we do that for your presentation in, in January, when we come back.
Yeah, if, if I could just respond to that, Mr. Chair, real quickly.
Sure.
I appreciate exactly what you just said, and I agree with it wholeheartedly. A forecast is nothing more than a forecast, but a strategy is, is so vital to the success of this next budget cycle, and probably the next two or three after.
Correct.
So, i- if, if we look at ways to lower potentially where we see free cash coming in, so we can use it operationally, that is, I think, the crucial conversation that I'm really looking forward to having, you know, with, with you, Jennifer, with you, Tony, with the board, with finance, I, I think this is going to be a really good team approach. Thank you.
Pete?
And, and just to throw my two cents in, Jeff, I think your conversation's headed in the exact appropriate direction, and, you know, a personal tax return is said to be a bad thing, right? You don't, you don't want Uncle Sam to have more of your money than they need to have. And, and this is apples and oranges, but at the same time, wh- what I'm curious is to, when's the last time we updated or, or reviewed that policy? You know, because 10 to 15% of a $25 million budget's a whole lot different than 10 to 15% of a $50 million budget. So, just like to see the last time we did that, and perhaps, you know, it is something we, we address, and especially as we move forward and develop in the '27 and '28 budget. So, anyway, good point.
Hold on, just one more thing for me, and I have a feeling Martha's going to say something similar, but I want to take the same discussion, I definitely agree with it, but I want to take the same discussion and try to dumb it down a little bit. There's several things that are happening. Free cash, you would never put on a continuing obligation associated with it, because that's how you get into real serious trouble.
Right, money.
So, it buys things essentially, or one-time events, and the budget pays for the continuing stuff. The real problem with the sweet spot, and I think, I know Tony's talked about this before, and several members of the board feel this way, if you start getting too aggressive, setting aside free cash, two things happen. You start getting a capital plan that's driven by how much money you have available, instead of what you really need to talk about. And the second one is, you can't deploy the, the same services, like people keep saying, "Well, how come Dennis can do this, and we don't provide that service?" Well, that's one of the reasons, because we've set aside, through conservative analysis, some monies that could have gone to continuous operations, but we have put it in that 10 to 15% bucket and said, "Don't touch this, this is our reserve." We have to have a serious discussion about what that really looks like, driven by what we really need to get and stuff. It, it just shouldn't be sitting there as an annual clearance sale. So, with that, Martha.
Martha Donovan, Chair of the Capital Outlet Committee, so I just, it's a great discussion to have, but I would just remind everybody that probably 90 to 95% of our capital, maybe not the big projects like the sewer, but just doing repairs in the buildings around town, are paid through that free cash. And so, if you have that discussion to adjust that free cash budget down, there needs to be a source for capital. We don't have necessarily a source for, to pay for capital on a regular basis, so I'd just add that into the mix as, as you have that conversation in the future.
And have it we will. Finance committee?
And then, and then let the gang have their opinions, and mostly, I just want to reiterate comments that have already been made, not a lot of them. This, I think this, what seemed like a very confusing chart the first time I saw it, this page 15, the local receipts analysis, is, is in fact extremely helpful and informative in terms of exactly what's being talked about. The comparison of a next-year budget to a last-year actual to the last-year budget is kind of eye-opening, where we keep, at least the last two years, say, budgeting, budgeting less than the year before, but the actuals were significantly more than the year before. But those are, those just by themselves jump out and raise questions, "Why are you doing this?", which has been mentioned, but it's, it's really quite an important topic to deal with. The net, the, the other is what's also been mentioned, the gray, the gray area on debt. I think that the, what people are really interested in is what are the, not what, not so much past history, this is, this is past history rolling out, it's what's going to happen in the future from a debt standpoint, and getting that included, at le, and yes, it's an estimate, some of it, some of it we have booked, some of it's an estimate, of the future debt services, and then finally, how all of that, there's nothing in here about taxes, and how all of this finally starts turning into tech impacts on the taxpayer in dollars and cents that they can understand, and because it's nice to see, you know, even get, getting back to free cash, suddenly generating $5 million in free cash, well, how does, what did the taxpayer had to pay to generate $5 million in free cash? And so, that's not here, it would be nice to include it. But it, but also, I would do want to mention that, I think it's wonderful to have this, thank you very much for putting it together, it's a great analysis. Thank you very much for inviting us to this meeting, and, and, and as part of, exactly as Chair Howell indicates, is part of, hopefully, an ongoing increase, participation, partnership in preparing the budget. Thank you all. And now, let's, let's see who else from the finance committee wants to ask questions. Dana?
My two cents.
Can you keep looking for someone else?
Yeah, but you get to me eventually, don't worry. Just two things. Four of us, Mark, and Tina, and Scott, and I went to the state finance committee meeting in Sharon this year, and I can tell you that a lot of portions of the state are going through the downturns that are happening quicker than we are. We're strong financially, and everything's going well, but western towns right now are really suffering in the same sort of thing that we're looking at with decreasing enrollments in their schools, and higher budgets, less money coming from the state, and so on and so forth. They did a very good analysis of what your actual state money, even though that's a very small portion very small portion of our pie, I like to call us state-neutral, which makes it very easy to sum your nose at the state when you have to. But, and when you look at that projected against inflation, the number goes down even more. They're giving less and less money out each year to the towns and cities, and that's showing up in many towns. And they had a pretty good presentation on three towns that did, they were twice our size, but they did general overrides, 12 million, 13 million, and 14 million overrides, and they all failed. And they worked like crazy to present those overrides to their public as to why they needed them. And one included half the money, it was 12 million bucks, half the money for the schools and half the money for the town, and, you know, they let out 50 people out of their budgets. They cut 50 positions at the end of it, when it failed, and people were mad at that. So, it's a no-win kind of situation. So, that's kind of was a forecast given to us that wasn't very pretty. And we should just keep that in mind. We want to be maybe less conservative in some ways, but we also are in a very good position right now, and maybe more bad news is coming down the road. In terms of that beautiful chart, and again, thank you, that we're learning so much from, I used to do all these when I was younger, but I don't anymore. If we are slicing the pie so thin to create that difference, the delta between estimated receipts and local receipts, we slice it to the point where we generate a lot of money out of that column, we end up, in many cases, deferring the things we could have done into another year, which means that the next year, they cost us more money, and we have to still do them. If you don't buy your police cruisers one year, and you got to buy six the next year, the price usually goes up, and you have to buy them all. It's just one of those things. So, you have to be very careful of that one. And the same is true on free cash. If you're building free cash in some ways by taking things out of the operating budget, like police cruisers, that are an every-year expense, then you're just fooling yourself. You're just creating another bucket that someday, if things come back to bite us in the free cash range, which it did back, do you remember?
Right after.
Your first year in office. If you do that too much, and that comes back to bite you, it bites hard, because you've already taken away all your little safety nets within the budget. And now, you have to buy police cruisers, and they've been out to override before, and failed there as well. So, people aren't going to spend 2.5 percent more in paternity on something they think you should be buying every year anyways. So, there are other things besides police cruiser, but that's the most common example, that we've taken out over the last few years to try and increase free cash for the next year out of the operating budget, because we didn't have enough receipts to support the operating budget with those things in it. So, very careful, tight rope to walk, and I hope we do it correct this year, because we can really grow from that financially, I think. That's all I got.
Guaranteed, we will. This is not the end of the discussion, this is the beginning of a discussion we have not had before. So, guaranteed, it's going to be discussed in much more depth.
Anyone else? Peter, Mr. Hughes.
Getting all the old serum.
No, we're going.
You're second now.
First of all, I want to congratulate you on putting this document together. I hope it's one of many that we do in the future. It's incredibly informative, and we appreciate it from the Finance Committee's standpoint. We, at the end of this document, say that Harwich as a town is in great shape. I encourage you to make one more slide. How was the Harwich taxpayer doing during this period? In other words, my suggestion would be take the average tax bill, break it down into its components, whether, you know, debt, whatever, and then show that going along with this to answer Don's friends that keep honing on him about why my tax bill is going up. Just a suggestion.
That's why I'm going into the Witness Protection Program.
We all know you. Usually.
Scott's on, and Tina's here.
Usually Scott does, I'm assuming Scott does.
He's got his hand up.
Scott?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you. So, I, I'm just going to follow up on the free cash discussion. I would endorse putting the knowable recurring expenses like police, and the other things that I've seen on the article for how we use free cash into the operating budget, echoing what others from the committee have said, to make that operating budget a more realistic picture of our recurring obligations. And I know that that will take away money from what we've called capital items in the past, and I think we should accept a lower target, whether it's a percentage of the budget, or however you want to quantify it, as the target for what the free cash deposit should be every year. And I think that free cash target should be focused on building the stabilization reserve, which would be a buffer against the unknowable stuff. So, put the knowable stuff into the operating budget, like the cruisers, and build up a better stabilization reserve to protect ourselves against the things we don't know ahead of time.
You done, Scott?
Done, Scott.
I'm done with, I'm done with that point, yes. I just wanted to follow up on the free cash discussion.
Go ahead.
Was there another point, Scott?
Yes. So, the other question was more of a technical question about how we represent debt service in these slides and in our operating budget. I see on page 17 of the presentation that our debt service is around $3.6 million. And yet, on page eight, I see that we have a total of $5.7 million of net excluded debt service. Jennifer, can you help me understand where the excluded debt service appears in our standard financial schedules? Because this is a category, because most of the sewer debt is excluded, as I understand it, that stands to increase significantly. And if the standard expense schedule, like on page 17, seems to exclude the excluded debt service, sorry for the double negative, why doesn't that excluded debt service show up in the standard expense schedule?
Um.
That's it for me.
Yeah, I may have to get back to you. I don't have my numbers right in front of me, but I do think that you're right, that this is just excluded, just looking at the numbers. But if I may, I'd like to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Does Tina have anything?
I don't have anything, this has been very educational and helpful, thank you so much, Jennifer.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And I look forward to this in the future, because we only got like five pages of detail for our budget, and you look like the kind of person that's not going to do that to us.
Perhaps.
No, no. It's refreshing how much information you've been giving us, I really appreciate it.
It's important.
John.
John.
Yeah, it's you.
John Chori, I'll report. Very good presentation, Jennifer. And you do know we have an opening for Finance Director in town, right?
I am aware.
We've heard word about that.
So, we get a second here tonight. Anyway, very good presentation. And whoever thought of putting it together, it's commendable, whether it was Tony or yourself, but it's a lot of information in there. It's a lot of good information for the town, and kind of simple information, really, for the town to speak, because some of this can get pretty complicated. I worked on it for six years, and it took me about six years to figure it all out, so I commend you on that. Just a couple of quick points. There was a lot on the debt schedule tonight, a lot of talk on the debt. And that's been an elusive target for me to nail down like a unicorn. Do you have a number, you don't have to get back to me right now, of the approved but unspent debt, just a number? You talked about gray areas on your chart there, but I'd like to see that number. I don't know what that number is.
I believe it's just north of $70 million in total.
Okay. So, that's a huge number, obviously. And then, your idea of grating it in is a great idea, too, to see it. Last one was on the last page on OPEC. You did talk about OPEC, you did talk about the service on it, and in your presentation, the liability is mentioned, but you did not mention the liability in your talk tonight. That liability is $41 million. There also is another OPEC liability, and that's the schools. And I didn't know quite what that was, but Michael and Scott showed up tonight, and I cornered Michael over there, sorry, Mike, but to quickly see if he could verify what OPEC for the schools are. And I thought it was around 22 million. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, because I didn't know what it was, but Michael says it also is around $42 million. So, that's, you know, $83 million, that's a lot of money. And we're on the hook, on the hook for the 41, whatever our percentage is of the school is, 75 percent now or something. So, other than that, great, great presentation, and great presentation by the Finance Committee and the Board up here. I think it's a big improvement, Tony. I don't know if you're personally responsible for driving this. You mentioned it, you did it.
I said I'm the idea guy, but.
Well, she's going to put the numbers together.
She's got the skills to.
No, it really, and like I say, it's pretty much in layman's terms, if you want to say that. I mean, it's still pretty deep there, but it's still, it's a good indication. And I hope more people in town take advantage of it. I know Jeff's constantly trying to get more people involved in this town in understanding this budget. And we are very lucky, we are a summer community, you heard Dana on the Western Park, a lot of our revenues come from these summer people, and so it's a great, it's like the goose that lays the golden egg. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Can we go to? Yeah, you can come with us.
You wouldn't want to see, you wouldn't want to be seen hanging out with us, really.
Thank you.
We're going to flip the discussion here, so, because the schools have been sitting here waiting patiently. And thank you, Michael, for coming. I know we originally were.
Dr. Kopp is there, too, you just can't see him.
Oh, he is, behind the seat. Yeah, hello there. We definitely wanted to hear from you, because we understood the committee, there was an open invite for them, but you issued the contract, so the reality is, we wanted to hear from you.
Yeah. That makes a lot of sense. Good evening, Slide Board. Michael McMillan, School Business Manager.
Scott Garver, Superintendent.
And we're just here to give you an update on, well, I thought it's the siding project at the middle school, and then I can tell you where a couple of the roofing project also stands. So, the, so with the siding project, so, we recently concluded the bidding process with the general contractor and the subfile bid for that project, and we received three quotes, three bids, and the winning bid was a low bid, was a company called Pearl Construction, which are actually based on Cape Cod, which is nice. And their bid was $6,983,000. And so, that's just for the construction, not just, but that's the construction portion of the project, so the biggest chunk of the project. And that was around $2.2 million below the budget for that portion of the project. So, we were pleased with that. It's very early in, you know, in the process for the project, we've not even, you know, not pulled a single shingle off the building yet, except the ones that've fallen off. So, we've got a long way to go to see how much the project will actually cost. But in terms of where we are, this is a good place to be, where, you know, right now, we've got some wriggle room in that budget for any, you know, issues that do come up, and we'll be managing it tightly and try and get, you know, we, I mean, our hope is that the project does come in $2 million below budget, but, you know, I just don't want anyone to count chickens yet, because we've got a long way to go. But so, that's where we are, the school committee approved awarding the contract to Pearl Construction a few weeks ago. We had our kickoff meeting just at the end of October, we're just, we've just recently executed the final contract for that, and then hopefully we get the windows ordered, so windows will get ordered, there is a bit of lead time in getting the windows delivered, especially there's so many different types of windows for such a building, so that takes a while. And we're hoping that the project will start construction in April, so that it can be finished by the second half of August, in time for schools to start next year. So, that's where we are, so everything's moving slowly, but in the right direction. So, any questions about that project?
Yeah, just a comment before everybody runs off with a bag of money, trying to spend it somewhere. Just so everyone understands, on a contract like this, there's always the potential for latent damage that wasn't covered, and that might need a change order, so once you peel away things.
Yeah.
I know the elementary school, that was a bonus find, when we found just tons of asbestos in the building that we didn't feel that we had. So, not that that's going to happen in a building of this age, but, but still, my own experience in contracts, and I know Tony has some too, a lot, don't count your chickens here until we actually see what's behind the siding that we're taking off.
Yeah, 100 percent. Yeah, absolutely. You know, so we, we tried through the, you know, through the design process to have engineers go punch all sorts of holes, and in the back of my mind the entire time was the conversation I was having with Jeff about, you know, the construction project that he had with the, you know, siding at his house, you know, so even though we punched holes every 20 feet to get a feel for what's behind it.
At 21 feet, you might have found.
Exactly. You know, so, you know, so fingers, you know, fingers crossed, we have a good estimate of what, you know, what it looks like underneath those shingles, but we won't know until they actually pull everything off.
Yeah, no doubt. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood this was a tentative number, that it's not like runoff, you've got a surplus of this much to spend.
Yeah. And to that point, so we have done some short-term borrowing to pay for costs as the project goes, but we won't do any long-term borrowing until the project's complete, and we know exactly how much it is, so we can minimize any unneeded borrowing. So, that will happen sort of September next year.
Before we go to the roof, anybody have any comments about the siding?
Just five months is impressive, start in April, finish in August before school's Thursday. Congratulations. I even say, I was on the Montemoy Building Committee, what a professional job you guys did in terms of the consultants, all the people from the community who read into it. I thought it was a great way to run a project, so I compliment you on that.
And just, just for clarity for everyone, you know, so we'll, you know, a chunk of this is going to happen while school's in session, you know, the contractor understands that we, you know, we will need to shut down zones of the school while they're doing what they need to do, but we can only take about eight classrooms offline at any given time to have enough space to, you know, have school function within a contracted, you know, number of classroom spaces. So, you know, so that, we're going to work with the contractor, there was part, you know, sort of like a phasing plan that was in the bid documents, so the contractor understands our needs, and then we'll make sure that as that happens, there's sort of good partition, separation between the construction project and, you know, the school, you know, that's having classrooms in use and functioning.
Pete? Real quickly, obviously, any savings would be tremendous. You said you had three bids come in?
Yes.
And this one was six and change?
Yeah.
Any idea what the others?
Yeah. And so, the, in order, so we had the lowest, which was just short shy of $7 million, the second was $7,170,000, so, which gives you some confidence, at least you've got two in the same ballpark. And then the third was 8.5 million, so much higher. So, yeah, so I thought that was.
And you're spot on why I asked the question, right?
Yeah.
Didn't want to see the others come in at 12 million.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This one came in at 6.8. You mentioned phases, Dr. Kopp, and do you recall how many they built into the, to the bid?
So, we sort of sketched out, I think it's about a six-phase process, but, but the bulk of those actually would happen in the summertime, when, you know, so, you know, so the contractor knows, once the school year ends, they can fully mobilize and kind of attack the building from, you know, from all sides. You know, there's, the way the building is set up, there's sort of like a quad around the sixth grade, seventh grade wing, so you can imagine that you don't want to be doing construction on the inside of that quad, where people are going to be having to walk through the building while class, you know, while class is in session. So, it'll largely likely be the backside of the building, and the, you know, the fifth grade wing region might be the first one, and it's just sort of like how many, you know, how many sections they're able to get done of that phasing plan prior to, you know, prior to. done of that phasing plan prior to, you know, prior to the end of the, you know, the end of the school year. They'll also, I'm sure, make good use of the April vacation timeframe when there's nobody in the building as well.
Nice. And lastly, if I couldn't, Mr. Chair. Oh, shit, we're going to lose it.
That's technical term.
Happens every time, every time.
Let me ask you...
Yeah, I'll go away soon.
She doesn't have any, so it's back on you.
You want me to come up with a question down here to just stall for you?
Maybe it'll be mine.
Want to go to the roof real quick while pizza?
Yeah, yes.
Find a pen to write some things down.
So, we are, right now, we're in the sort of schematic design phase of the roofing project. We're working with a project manager and an architect to design what the solution's going to look like. That's going to be submitted to the MSBA, because it's a Massachusetts School Building Authority project. They are reimbursing us around 37% for this project. So we have to submit that design to them by December 18th to go to their board meeting in February 25th for their approval. And in the meantime, we'll be drafting the approval process for the school committee to review and hopefully approve it. And then I'll come to yourselves and to the town of Chatham. And then ultimately, two town meetings to approve it in the spring. So, that project is, you know, in theory, it's more straightforward than the siding, because you're, you know, in theory, just replacing the roof. But it is a complicated roof. There's many elevations, there's a lot of HVAC equipment up there, and there's two different materials right now. There's asphalt shingles and the rubber roof, yeah, the ETC roof that has to be replaced. So, it's going to be a slightly complicated project and may well, we're not there yet, but may well have to start a little before summer to get done before school starts following year, November 28th. So that, so we'll have the budget information and all that for you soon.
Excellent. Thank you. And is there anything more you want to add, or?
I got my question.
Okay.
You're back.
It's back, yeah. You alluded to the various windows that you need to purchase. Did either the, your project, owner project manager or the contractor indicate if they're confident that they'll be able to source those windows in time for the project?
So, we did have a meeting, when we had that kickoff meeting, we had a couple of our subfile bid companies there as well, contractors. We had the waterproofing and the windows. And they did not give any indication that they would not be able to get them. I mean, they said, we're going to, you know, they warned us that they'd take some time, but they didn't express any concern that it would be your fault.
I think maybe the biggest concern that the contractor had is, the architects were asking, could we get a sample window to kind of do a little sample mock-up? And, you know, I think he was just expressing concerns on how quickly a sample window could get done, you know, given that you're building something sort of out of sequence that, you know, but he seemed fairly confident that he could have the whole delivery. And then it becomes, you know, how many roll-offs do we need to go and store all the windows in when they all show up at once?
And while I could, this came to me, the siding, you folks had, I don't know, four or five different options, right? What did you end up selecting for the siding?
It's a concrete fiberboard product. You know, so Hardyboard is the, I guess, one of the brand names out there. There's about, there's three or four different ones. But it'll be a fiberboard that looks very similar to shingles. It's, you know, it'll just be in a gray tone.
And just because I care, the various price points on each of them, do you remember, was that kind of the middle of the road, or was that the high end?
At the moment, I think it's, they're all very similar in price. And I think it's going to, you know, so I think the spec was written around that, you know, that type. And again, there aren't very many companies that make it. So I think it's going to depend on which one comes up with the best product for the contractor. And then we'll go vet, you know, what they're putting on as...
And if I could, just one question on the roof. You're doing away with the Kupol, so that's not a maintenance nightmare?
No.
You're going to keep it? Keep that maintenance nightmare?
Yeah.
This guy must love you guys.
Yeah. And you know what? Like, we don't do much with it, so...
I'm sure you don't, was what I mean.
Okay, do it as a nightmare.
Probably save you a couple bucks if you get rid of it.
Yeah.
But, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Along with that theme, Michael?
Yeah.
We batted around the windows and the siding. You're sitting in a building where there's a gift that keeps on giving. How much, if any, water migration in that building is due, not to the siding or the flashing, but to the roofing? Is there any that you know?
So, there has been. We spend, you know, we spend time and money patching holes. I mean, because the PDC roof is actually easy to patch if you can find a hole. So we have, we spend a lot of time with roof layers up there, walking the roof and trying to find any...
We just use a bucket.
Yeah, yeah, we've done that too. So, but right now, I think there's a couple of active leaks, but not, you know, we don't have buckets in the corridors or anything like that at the moment. So we're always watching. I mean, like, the rain last night, there'll have been a couple, so we'll just keep our eyes out for it. And, you know, especially with all the HVAC equipment, sometimes if the wind blows a different way, you get it coming in at a different angle, and you find new ways of entry for the water. But it's, in terms of water getting into the building, I mean, you can see the water getting in the siding, because there's visible holes. So, the water getting into the building is primarily through the siding at the moment.
Okay. You understand why I'm asking that?
Yeah, yeah.
Because no point in buttoning up the parts that are down below in the building if you're feeding it from above?
Yeah.
Mark, Jeff?
And then just one last...
Thanks a lot, really appreciate you.
I was just going to say, one last thing. So we are in the middle, we started our budget process, and these numbers will sort of eventually feed into our budget. We have a school committee workshop this week, where they'll be hearing from principals, sort of similar to happening in Europe, in Harwich right now. And then we'll on-target some of our draft budget to you January 18th, hey, January 15th, in line with the regional agreement.
Great. All right. Well, thanks. Sorry to make you wait so long, but...
Thank you. It was interesting, it was really interesting to hear the presentation before us.
To us, too. All right. Moving on to the building commissioner.
So while Eleanor is coming up to the desk, just wanted to sort of give a little preamble on this one, as, you know, I continue to look at operations across the town in areas where arguably we need to make some improvements or changes in how we do business. I think better reflects, I think, the complexities that have entered into this particular field, if you will. And she'll touch on some of the specifics of that. But we're seeing a movement across the towns to restructure how they do their building fees as the requirements for review of these projects, particularly in coastal communities, and how the code has changed and the amount of effort and time it takes. The old method was, become, you know, not equitable and frankly unfair, right, in terms of what the town has to put in to do this. So, this is a more equitable and fair way, and towns are moving in this direction. So we're not out there plowing new earth on this, but it's part of the trend, and I think is something we definitely need to do. And so Eleanor's going to share some of the background behind it to give you some idea of what's driving this change to more cost per thousand versus the old pennies on the square foot, so...
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, thank you very much. To just continue what Tony was saying about our codes changing, behind me, on the chair on the right, what we used to have, two code books, okay? And now, on this chair on the left, are our current code books. And just this July 1, we have a whole new code, and that we have to follow. We're no longer following the 2015 version. We're now in the 2021 version. So we're, just like Tony said, as requirements change, our requirements of what we're looking for in the whole building permit process has to change. So it takes more time, more involvement. So, let's dive into what I was, what we're looking at.
That's why we don't get any money on the cherry sheet, because they keep doing the updates.
Maybe they should change the color of the sheet.
Okay, so, almost every project, when you modify a structure, you need to get a building permit for it. So, we're going to, so the building permit process at Town Hall is, someone will compile their drawings. They're going to have maybe, I don't know, 20 drawings, depending on the complexity of the project. And they're going to upload them, they're going to apply online to the building department. They're going to upload all these drawings. And our first step is, we'll review them to make sure it's a complete presentation. So are they including all their existing and proposed plans? Do they have their existing room proposed, elevations, the septic plans, the structural plans, the contracts, licenses, and proofs of insurance? So we're going to determine if they have all that information. And then our building department, the admin team, is going to reach back out to try and make sure that their permit application is complete. Once it is complete, we'll start filtering it off to different departments. So it might need to go to the zoning board of appeals, it might need to go to historic, it might need to go to conservation. So that's one of the first steps we do, is we review the permit and we decide, does it need relief from another department? If so, it goes there. And then it comes back to the building department for another continuation of the review. So, once it comes back to us, we're going to review it for, all these books right back behind me, for FEMA compliance, code compliance, mechanical, electrical, structural. And as we go through that process, you can see on the right side of the screen is a snapshot of our building permit, Open Gov system, right? And it's very hard to read on that. I don't know if you can read it on the screen of the sheet in front of you. But it goes from building to board health, back to planning, to conservation, and then back to building. And we talk, and on the far right, you can see is where we dive into a discussion with the applicant. And so this is a very, it's a good system. It shows you how linear a process it is. But there's the applicant, they're going through the different departments, and they're talking to us, and we're talking to them, and we're informing the permit application as we go through it. And let's see. So, the next steps are the inspections, all right? So, when we, after the permit's issued, we're going to go out to that project at least five times. So the inspector's going to check for the foundation, the footings, the frame, the insulation. After that's completed, and it goes through the process once again, all of the departments look at the permit again to make sure that what has been built meets what was, their requirements, like the order of conditions for conservation, or the zoning board of appeals decision has been met. So, this project that we have this example of over here, this project was 960 square feet. We charged a fee of $629. And there were over 80 points where we communicated back and forth with the applicant. So there were 80 discussions. It's surprising, it's surprising the amount of times there's a conversation back and forth. So, once you, once you look at that, you realize why we're so busy with this process. So, building permit fees are calculated in mainly two different ways, cost per square foot or cost per construction. Harwich, we've calculated at 55 cents per square foot. And you can see, all these towns with a dot in it are just reflected here, where we have an example of what permits cost in different towns. Most of our projects in town are small to medium-sized projects, okay? So they're either 120, the small projects, 125 square feet, maybe the fee is $50,000. Well, the construction cost is $50,000. Our building department fee is $138. Now, for a medium project, it goes up, the construction cost is $200,000, and we charge $345. But you can look at those fees and then try and relate it back to the screen where we're just looking at, and all the different departments, and all the different communication, and all the different steps, to make sure that there's a, the appropriate building permit's been issued and the project's been built and the manor it's supposed to be built, that we're not charging enough. You look at this fee, and we just are not sustainable as a building department. So I'm here to ask that we try and just address this and make a sustainable department and modify our permit fees to be more in line with what the majority of towns in Massachusetts are doing now. And that's to charge by construction cost. So I'm looking for 1.2% of construction cost moving forward. So, these numbers, what we're trying to talk about in these numbers is how much time can, how many times communication, or how many, that's the best way to say this, how many times we communicate in the departments and with the applicant about a permit, right? So, when you look at the amount of permits we've issued in the building department last year, it was 4,271 permits. And then we had 5,515 inspections, right? When you, when you look at that, and the 726 of these permits were residential, so they had 80 touchpoints. There's 58,080 times someone from building, health, zoning, conservation, and planning reviewed, asked a question, or answered a question, and assigned this permit to move on to the next department. So, you can read the numbers when you bring in the electrical and the plumbing, but we have an enormous amount of information that changes hands all year long. And I am so proud of the building department and what they have done. It's, they're keeping a lot of information straight. But what we're proposing to do is, this increase is designed to be just a small jump on many permits and not a large bump on any single type of applicant or discipline. And then, for the last, the last is just a quick Cape snapshot. If you want to compare just Cape towns that are, have trained, who have, who are currently charging cost, it's already accepted and functioning, to charge per construction cost is Barnstable, Thelmoth, and Peton Province Town. And we're just proposing to modify the fee so our department is sustainable.
So if I can just make a couple of comments on this as we look at this, and we just, you know, kind of put it in perspective in terms of the amount of people that are involved in, you know, reviewing and approving these permits from start to finish. And you consider that if somebody's, you know, spending $100,000 on a project, that 1.2% is too much, right? So fees are one of those areas where it's supposed to recapture the cost of providing the service. And so when you look at a project where we're charging a permit fee of $138, you know, that barely, you know, covers probably one inspection, right? And so the reason towns are going to this model is because it's more fair and equitable and better reflects towns' ability to at least recapture, you know, more of the cost of providing that service. You can never charge more than what it costs you provide that service, but even at $12 per thousand, you know, we're still under in terms of what we have to do in complying with the new code and everything that comes, you know, comes with that. So, you know, given we haven't had a full-time building commissioner in town for a number of years, I want to thank Eleanor for, this is one of the first projects I gave her to take a look at this. I have a background in construction, so I knew this was an area that was being looked at across the Commonwealth in towns in terms of how to have a fee... at across the Commonwealth and towns in terms of how to have a fee structure that's better representative in terms of what the towns are providing, you know, back to them on their, on their projects. So I guess that's the, that's the ask to consider this restructure. I know we have a process that if the board wants to continue on, that we'll, you know, schedule a public hearing in a couple of weeks to take one more, you know, bite at the apple with, with anybody before, you know, we ask for an implementation, so.
Much as, much as I'm, I don't think anybody on the board is really, is really interested in really hyping building fees up, but just a reminder to everybody, this is something that's caused by some individual or some corporation doing something that, at this point in time, we're pretty much subsidizing. Everybody who pays taxes is subsidizing the event, which is a little unfair. I see the books, and I keep thinking to myself nostalgically, about 150 years ago, you get down on the water and pick up some debris from a broken-up ship and build a house, and that was the end of it. It's no wonder we're having problems with starter homes, but it is what it is. This is what it costs us. I think it would be a big mistake for us to not have this conversation because there is another enhanced stretch code that's coming up some, at some point in time that they may mandate to us that's even gonna be more complex than this.
Specialized, yeah.
If we get too far behind the curve, it's gonna be like sticker shock. So I don't think that's fair either.
Eleanor, thank you so much. The only question I have is, totally agree with the whole concept, you know, for a small project, 50, you know, from 138 to 600, to me, is not a big jump. I, I do look at the cost for a medium project. We're going from $345 to $2,400. I haven't done the math, the percentage, you know, that's, you know, for, if you do a major renovation, it could be 400,000, and then it's up to 4,800. Will those costs inhibit any construction? Or will these builders say, no problem? I, I just wanted to get if, and have you had any feedback from builders about if this will deter any construction? Because we have a housing crisis. We want to build.
The two previous towns I was working for do, their building fees this way. They do it by construction cost, and they have not seen a decline in buildings.
But I think the other thing, it's, it's 1.2%. I think you gotta put it in perspective. If you're gonna shell out $200,000 for a project and you can't afford $1,200, there's a problem there, right? So this is an economic thing for, for the town because of the increase in the level of effort and service. Our salaries go up, right? All of that goes into figuring out, you know, what it costs for us to provide services. So all those are going up. So again, when you consider 1.2%, it's, it's still a small number, frankly, when, when you're looking at what we have to go through to get them from start to a CEO at the end of certificate of occupancy, so.
Jeff?
Yeah, you set?
I've set.
All done? Thank you for being here. So I, I'm looking at, well, I'll start by saying, the more a project costs,
Yes.
the more touchpoints there's gonna be.
Yes.
Right? I mean, simple, and
Not necessarily, not necessarily. You could have a bathroom remodel, right? And you're there, and, and it's a small footprint. It might be 100 square feet, but you don't realize until you start inspecting that, that they've, they've cut out those floor joists under that toilet because they wanted it arranged differently. And now you're talking about framing, and now you're talking about insulation, and now you're talking about, you just don't know.
And that's exactly my point. The more intricate a project is, the more, the more touchpoints, and the more there's gonna have to be communication with the town. So with that being said, like, I, I look at your current, which is 125 square feet, for $50,000. That's $400 a square foot.
Yes.
I don't know what, what you can build these days for $400 a square foot. So the model is flawed right from the beginning because you're, the cost per square foot is not remotely close to what it actually costs to renovate or build currently.
We've seen numbers between 400 and 500 cost per square foot. I'm not sure where your, your sources are.
And we've done probably six projects in the last two years in Harwich through the building department. And, and our contractors are working between 6 to 8, sometimes $900 a square foot. And, and like I said, I, I think the, the more intricate a project is, the more touchpoints is gonna be. A very basic 120-square-foot remodel, sure, you could get it done for $400 a square foot, but it's gonna be bare bones, and the project cost will probably escalate as the project moves forward, which is another point I'm gonna, so if you're basing the permit fee off what they think it's gonna cost, everything increases by 20 to 30% as the project moves forward. So I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, of the proposal because I think it puts us in line to do two things. One, give a product to the, to the construction industry that will be more efficient because we might be able to hire another person to help out. I also think that it will, as Tony said, work at, at least covering our bare, our bare costs to just allow somebody to come into the town of Harwich and, and, and do anything construction-based. So I, I don't see a problem with the proposal of $12 per thousand. I think that's right on, right on track, to be quite honest with you. Last question, if I may? What is this due to a whole house built? Like, if, if somebody were to demolish a house and then rebuild a house, are we still gonna be at, at $12 per thousand for that entire project? Okay. So there, this isn't just for small remodels, this is for everything.
Across the board, yeah.
Across the board.
These were just examples, just a representative
We're not gonna resolve this tonight anyways. No, no, but, and I, I thank you, as I'm in the middle of a project right now, and I know what I just paid for a permit. Literally, just paid for a permit. I know what it costs, I know what the cost of the build is, I know how many square feet it is. I know anything about the project. It's gonna be interesting to see what, what the difference would be for, for what we just paid. And not saying I don't wanna pay it in the future, because what you all do here is provide a service that's quality control, as well as making sure that conservation and all the other regulatory things are met. So I'm, I'm on board with this.
Okay, first off, thank you very much, and nice meeting you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
And, and I am very much in, in favor of what you're doing. And you may not know the question to this, or the answer to my question, but do you have any idea, the last time that you were going to be asked this, when the last time the fees were ever looked at?
2019.
Okay, thank you.
Six years ago.
Yeah, that's, that's, it was a while ago, so we're due. We're due. Okay, thank you very much.
If I could add one thing before we move on to Pete. Part of that discussion was the inability for the then-current building commissioner to come up with, Tony's statement earlier was a key statement, we're not supposed to make a profit off of it, and I don't really care what Dennis does or Yarmut does, if it doesn't have the same cost structure as we do. And we really never got to this point in that discussion because it really just boiled down to, well, I think we usually spend about seven hours on a permit, and that was it. So this is a lot more illustrative. So even six years ago, that wasn't anything like this.
But thank you very much, thank you.
I'll go back to taxes for a second. Jeff, fees are like taxes, if you wanna contribute more, please feel free.
Well, the, the permit we just pulled would have gone from 20, would have gone from 4,800, which we just paid, to 25,200.
You can make a check out.
It's something that I, you know, but thank you, I'll, I'll consider paying, Mark.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here in the, in the presentation tonight. You know, I, I kinda understand where Mark was coming from as far as, you know, the additional cost isn't gonna be absorbed by the builder, it's going to the, to the end user. And so when, when we talk about affordability, you get nervous because you don't wanna see increased cost for somebody who's trying to get into a starter home. However, to Jeff's point, they're not having, you know, $100,000 in a bathroom in that starter home. So the, the, the impact to that starter home, if anybody ever chooses to build them again, would be minimal as far as what they need to absorb to, to purchase that home. So, you know, I think, I think this puts us on the right track. Interested to know or to understand why you came up with 12 or 1.2 as opposed to a different number? Was there a method to your madness? Was it something you've seen previously?
It was, it was. Well, so if, if we stay on Cape, right? And you look at the size of Falmouth and what they charge at $8 a square foot, and their building department that they support with that fee and the area, their land area, and then you, you also extrapolate it out and you look at Provincetown, and you look at how much smaller that is, and how much larger their fee is. We, we, we kinda were just, as they are a precedent that supports their departments, we looked at that, came up with the, the number, but we also wanted to look at what we really needed to, to sustain our department. So that's, that's where it was, what we can sustain our department and still be, you know, follow the precedent, not, not be out of the realm.
Yeah, so it's more to like what, what Dawn said about, you know, our, our structure here, you know, we looked at those towns just in, sort of, to make sure we weren't too far askew, just in, in terms of, of how they are, but then we took a more in-depth look at our, you know, building, because everyone's, you know, structured a little bit different in terms of their numbers of people, staff they support, and, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Mr. Chair of
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I started to cringe when you were talking about at the staff, so I started to twitch over here a little bit, but clearly, we're not making any promises in that realm, but I believe you might have mentioned a couple of weeks ago, did we fill the last inspector's position or not yet?
We thought we did, but we didn't due to, I'll say, financial reasons, yeah, so.
But at this point, is this the one inspector now? Okay, thank you, that's all.
Jeff?
The only thing I would add to Pete's point, which is a great one, is I would like to discuss a carve-out, if it's at all possible, for affordable housing projects, where maybe they don't pay that rate.
And we could waive those fees.
There is a process.
I, I would love to have that be part of our conversation, because with all these books and mandates and unfunded mandates coming forward and stretch codes and all that kind of stuff for building, I don't wanna be part of that problem by our, by our town not being a cooperative partner with affordable housing, since we talk about it all the time.
Yeah, I knew that was coming, and Eleanor and I spoke about that. So there already is a process for us to review those, whether they're nonprofits doing it or whatever, to make, make adjustments on a case-by-case basis, so.
I'm just guessing here, but it might also be dependent on the personalities of people sitting up here if we take one approach to this. So it's probably a good idea that we codify this for affordable housing so that we don't wind up outvoting the exemption.
Right, well, we would follow the general fee waiver policy that you already have in place for the town of Harwich, for nonprofit organizations. They would write a, a request to us, and then it would be at your discretion.
That's a little naive, because that's not exactly what was happening.
Well, we're, we're getting in line with
Yeah, we are, and I mean, right now, I have a high confidence level of what Jeff is asking is something that we'll deliver on, but I just, I just wanna make sure that as we go forward, there's some language that really does skew it towards, we're going to give the exemption for a legitimate housing project.
Just real quickly, and I realize, you know, it'd be a public hearing, but there's no timeframe to wait, right? This doesn't need to be a fiscal year decision. This can be implemented whenever we finish the process.
And that's what I was gonna say. I anticipate tomorrow, when I talk to Tony about the agenda, that we'll map out a timeline for what it takes to advertise this as a public hearing so that we can have that further discussion that we're talking about.
Yeah, about two weeks, I'll
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor.
Yeah, a lot of good information. All right. So we have the discussion on the cultural center, license agreements. Towns need for municipal space, so I'm gonna turn that over to Tony to start.
Well, thank you very much. So before I dive into sort of the, the background here, because I, I think, you know, to this point, the discussion is mostly, you know, centered around the, the licensee that's involved in the decision that I made, right? So we'll, we'll get to that, that part of it, but I think it's the chicken and the egg at this point, and I think it's important to start off with how did I arrive at this? What was the, the background behind it? Certainly, as it relates to the cultural center and when it was initially developed, there was always the chance that the town may need to, you know, put municipal operations, office space, whatever you wanna call it, in, in the building at some point in time, which is why the license agreements were kind of written the way, way that they were. So that was sort of always kind of known. So now, that being said, you know, when I, when I arrived here, you know, there was some pretty specific direction from the board in, in looking at, you know, our operations, looking at our employees, and, you know, where they were situated. So it, it didn't take me but the first time that I, you know, went into one of the buildings and realized that one of our major functions was not in a suitable, appropriate, and professional office space for the function that they're charged with for a whole host of reasons. And so as I went about in trying to come up with a solution, I think it became pretty obvious right out of the gate that, you know, town hall was kind of busting at the seams, so this wasn't a, a solution. But at the same time, we needed to do something to make sure that our employees in an appropriate workspace for the function that they, that they provide. So again, knowing that, that the cultural center was one, you know, potential opportunity for that, I started to ask some questions about, you know, what, what makes sense. And so when you look at something like that, you also take into account that, you know, you wouldn't put an office in, you know, I'll say, in the depth of the school amongst everything that's going on in there, you try to keep, you know, functions close to one another, whatever, and obviously, care of the director's office is, is right inside the, the front door there, so you try to, you know, cluster those, you know, things together. And let me just start off by saying, this decision was about the town needing operational space in a function. Now, I understand that there's people involved in this, right? So we'll get to that. But I have a responsibility to make sure that I am taking care of my people, taking care of our staff, and again, making sure that our operations are suitably located in, in whatever office space for their function. So, so that kinda, kinda drove that. And it's not, you know, lost on me that, you know, I make decisions every day, the decisions have consequences, decisions that matter, I don't take those things lightly. But by the same token, and I know it's come up about process, right? What process do I use? And I would say that it depends. And the only analogy I can come up with that's similar to this was when my homeowner's insurance wrote me a letter and said, we're terminating your homeowner's policy because we're not, you know, insuring homes on the Cape any longer, go find somebody else. Kinda caught me by surprise, wasn't really expecting that, but, you know, I had to deal with it, right? And then on the other hand, at a different point in time, we had a couple of shingles that were tearing in on the house, different insurance company, but wrote me a letter and said, we noticed this happened, if you don't cure it in 30 days, then we're gonna cancel your policy, right? So two separate type of, of situation, and this goes along with that. If we were dealing with a situation where we needed to cure something, then that's a different, that's a different process than, than what this would take. You take the action first, and then you work through any other potential solutions that, that may, you know, come from that. And so, so that's why I made the decision, because this was important. I think it still needs to move forward for that particular space, notwithstanding the folks that are in there, and I hope I get your support on that. But by the same token, we need to talk a little bit, because this has been raised, and it goes to authority, right? And what authority does the town administrator? I think when I sat at that table back in July, I told you, it's very important for Tony Schiavi that when I take on a position, I understand my authority, I know where it comes from, and I make sure I apply it appropriately and judiciously. So this decision that I made didn't just come out of, come out of the blue, I looked at a lot of different things. The use policy that is issued for the building, clearly at the bottom says the Harvard Select Board authorizes the office of the town administrator to approve the, the use and arrange scheduling and the use of, of the building and all of the applicants therein, right? So that was number one. Number two was, it's been stated this is the first time this has ever happened, that is not true. It has happened in the past, it happened when Chris Clark was the town administrator, those decisions were made for different reasons. But I also gave you a pack of information that back in 2024, Administrator Powers wrote letters to two occupants telling them that their contract with the town was being terminated. I also look at the charter and the responsibilities of the town administrator to handle all matters of, of operational needs for the town. I did ask town council for an opinion on this, because again, I'm not, you know, so naive to think that if I made a mistake, I need to know, I need to figure out naive to think that if I made a mistake, I need to know, I need to figure out, you know, what the path forward is. So I would say that the answer we get back was a little bit of both. Clearly, the town council talked to the charter, and the town administrator's responsibility is in there, and obviously, there's a lot of responsibility that goes with that, but the town administrator is a contract administrator too for the board, because the board signs a lot of contracts, and the town administrator's office is responsible for administering all aspects of that, not some of it, but all aspects of that. What's unclear at this point, and town council brought this up, whether at some point in time, there was either a specific or implied delegation to the town administrator's office to handle agreements around real property. Now, certainly, some of the information I found would indicate that the answer to that is yes, but I think that needs to be cleared up in some form or fashion with the board and clearly documented, not just for me, but for future administrators to understand exactly if there is a line there that, you know, rests with the board versus the town administrator, obviously, we need to know that and need to clear that out. So that's kind of the chicken and the egg part of it, so that's where I originally arrived at the decision, again, notwithstanding that somebody was in that room and was impacted by this. But I think the egg part of it is then we'll be looking at, you know, the use of the space and the use of the licenses and all of that, because the unfortunate part about this is, because of the way that we ended up in front of all of you with how this kind of went down, it was not something I wanted to spend time on, but things that were put in print, things that were put on social media, things that were put in emails forced me to take a deeper dive in what's going on with this particular license agreement. There's some, definitely some red flags that we need to get out on the table, we need to talk about and see if they can be cured in the event that there is a place to move these folks to, so that can come second. But that's the chicken part of my decision and why I arrived at that, why it's important and hope to continue to move in that direction. I did meet with the licensee several times, I also went to the cultural center, I met with a large number of the tenants in an open meeting, spent 40 minutes there, answered questions, let them know where I was coming from and why, and also the value that we know that the 39 artists that are in that building, because arts and culture is an important part of economic development and other aspects, so there's a jewel there. This is not meant to completely upset the apple cart of that, but it is a town building, and I would say that despite the social media stuff, I got a total of three emails on this, but I had five residents search me out via telephone and walking, I'll say, more or less walking down the street, who felt very strongly about the town's needs to be able to use space if it feels it needs it for municipal operations and feel very, so there's two sides of this in the community, and we need to be able to listen to both of those and find where the balance is on how we do that. So I just want to make sure those people aren't on social media, they're not going to necessarily email the board, but they'll talk to me because they know who I am, so kind of that's that part of it, and you may have questions that I can answer related to the other piece.
Before we start, I mean, I said this at the charter mission on Thursday also, and I've said this to you privately, I spent about eight out of like 16 years in the federal government as a senior contracting officer. I know of no place where the contracting officer winds up taking their act on the road and starts taking a tape measure out to see if the foundation or the widgets or the services, right, they hand it over to administration. I see nothing that violated any of that here. Contract administration has always been delineated as part of the administration's office, and the select board, regardless how many years back you go, depending on what dollar threshold it is, issues the contracts, but we have never done follow-up contract administration at the board level, not even sure how that would look. So having said that, it's also in writing. I mean, in this license, contract, whatever you want to call it, is a binding document, it's a bilateral document, and it lays out terms and conditions, and actually, in this case, what it is you're doing there is enumerated in the document. It's only, you're only allowed to do what it is that the document says you're allowed to do, and then there's also the carve-outs for personnel, and there are certain personnel that have to be in a confidential area. So with that framing everything, I'm not sure how we want to proceed. You want to have us talk to Jenna over this or?
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to hear, but if the board has other questions about what I talked about or other information that I had, or we?
Again, that was a good time to ask him.
I just have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
And thank you for all of that, Tony. In the beginning, and I know it was an error, it was room 101, then it became room 102, now on the lease, I noticed room 809.
So let me?
What room are we looking?
So it's room 102. I've let them know that, you know, because of the process we've had to take, right, to now bring it before the board, and that the original letter and the, you know, date of 1 December is basically mute at this point in terms of that, so they're actually in 102, and this is an important point that needs to be brought up, because, you know, and I found all kinds of documentation, so facts are facts, right, and that's, it's not nuanced, it's not things we thought or understandings we developed, it's what you find in writing. And so, you know, from the very beginning, and right through to this current license agreement, the folks, you know, Jenna Powell, the licensee, was advocating for larger space, okay, to include what was on their application, I have email traffic going back to the fall of 2022 before we even got to licenses, advocating for a bigger space to support what they do, right, which is fine. And so the opportunity came up to make a swap between the person 102 and the person in 809, which was Jenna Powell's license agreement for. That was a mutual agreement of the parties, and it took me a while to kind of track all that down. That was a mutual agreement of the parties that was approved by the town administrator for them to swap spaces. There is no, and we have, I think in part of documentation, the tracking log, so we know which artists are in which rooms and how much they pay and all of that. That was updated at that time to reflect that decision to swap the tenant in 809 with the tenant in 102, and so that happened, I think, in the springtime of 2024, so over a year and a half ago. But nowhere in there was there footnotes, annotations, or anything that it was anything other than a permanent swap. Now, should the town have gone back and updated the license agreements? If it was me, yes, I would have, but I think you have to look at it from what would a reasonable person determine from the information and the actual documentation and the source documents about how that happened. And I think a reasonable person would conclude that the two parties wanted to swap rooms, one didn't have a higher priority than the other, and the town allowed that to happen, right, and approved that. It wasn't the town asking to do it, we weren't involved in anything but the approval, so that's where we sit. Now, there's been some indications, both in print and otherwise, that the legal license document, right, says I'm legally licensed to 809, and what's that, what that has forced me to do is take a deep dive into the license and the RFP and the terms and conditions, because it clearly mentions in the use document that the renters in that building, right, it's not to operate a business, so that's point number one. Second, when you look at the license agreement and you look at the RFP, it's for individuals and nonprofit organizations, okay, not businesses, individuals, nonprofit organizations. The proposal in the license agreement is to an individual, but all indications are, and none of it is coming from our mouth, is that High Point Vintage is utilizing the space as a, it's a business. And so what you have now is a situation where, and if you look at the license agreement, there's a prohibition about assigning or subleasing a license to anyone else, right? And so when I noticed that, right, and became aware of that, I asked to see the business certificate for High Point Vintage, filed in the clerk's office, February 2025, around the 25th, somewhere in there, but it's not from Jenna Powell, it's from Connor Howard Rose, not Jenna Powell. It has a residence of 40 Long Road as the residence, but the census form that was sent to the clerk on the 5th of February by the owner of that property says they don't live there anymore, and they didn't know where they lived. So the unfortunate reality of all this, we've been forced into diving into all this documentation. Now, both in the application, what was put in the newspaper, what was said at the podium was that they make tiles and coasters and all of that, none of that is happening in room 102 at all. It is essentially, and if you look, as part of their license agreement, they have to provide to the town a sheet of all materials, hazards, right, because you have people with paint, thinner, you know, lacquer, who knows what else, and their sheet for their room has one item listed, and it's textiles. So I provided the board with photos from our recent survey of all the buildings over there. I think, again, a reasonable person would conclude that there isn't anything else going on in there other than, you know, storing items to operate, you know, their business. So now, can all those things be cured? They might be, but I think it's important that we set the record straight about where we are right now, because this is not an easy solution to say we're going to move it from 102 to 809 or any other room, given some of the issues that are going on here. So when somebody says they have a legal document saying, "Hey, I'm licensed for this room," and then we look at it and say, "Well, you're in violation of this, 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 and this," that's a problem. And it wasn't one that I wanted to find or look for, but I didn't have any other choice. That's my job, that's what I get paid to do, and we just need to see where this thing goes. They have a business, a livelihood they're trying to go, I empathize with that, and I know how difficult it is, but at the same time, you know, I also have a responsibility to the town, to the board, and whoever, to make sure that everything is happening the way that it should be, and, you know, if it's not, we need to figure out, how do we, you know, how do we cure that. So it wasn't fun going through all this, but that's what I found. Sorry, that was a very long answer to your question, Jeff, but.
Can you come?
Yeah, just hold on. That's why I said upfront, what I said upfront, because there's been some contentions made about, well, we issued the contract, so only we can administer the contract. That is patently false. We issue contracts all the time, and we expect the administration office to follow them to their conclusion, and the successful receipt to be the goods or services that we've contracted for. Jenna, you want to have a seat, or you want to stand? It's your choice.
Hello, thank you for taking time to go through all this. I don't think everything is as, yeah, there's a lot to it. I am the license holder for the room. I am myself an independent artist, so I file my taxes separately than High Point Vintage, which is a DBA, and our license agreement, my license agreement for the room was never registered as High Point Vintage. We do other stuff out of that room, it obviously looks like just textiles in there, but you don't see all the work that we do in there as well. But yeah, there's, and there's many different points to this. The verbal agreement that was made to switch rooms with the tenant from 102 to 809 had not gone down exactly like that. So originally, I first moved into the building where there were the modular rooms in the back, so I was in, when I first came in, and it was the two of us, the way they did the license agreement, and this is why it continued to be applied that way, was a double occupancy was like two separate entities in one room. Some rooms are a shared artist space, and there are two separate tenants in one space. We were considered one entity, it's like having somebody come into your work, I don't know, another room where there's your one entity, but two people doing the same thing. So I was told to just apply as one of us, and yeah, so there were a lot of different things we did at the time then. We were, this was 2019, we came into a much larger space, we paid a lot more for that space. It was air-conditioned, it had suitable windows, we came in with our tile product, which is resin-based and needs proper ventilation and everything, and that room allowed us the proper usage of the space to do that, and what happened within three months, they condemned those three modular rooms and relocated the three tenants of those three rooms because they weren't structurally sound, and we were the latest of the, the other two tenants in the modular rooms were tenants already, so they got priority to pick rooms in the building, which there were few of at the time, and the only room to put us in was room 809. So this is going back to winter of 2020, and so we were temporarily, we were told at the time temporarily, put in room 809, and at the time, the public was told there was a wait list, I'm sure people have been tracking the 204, there have been many different little iterations of how things have been done. So we were told we were on a wait list for a larger room that met the likeness of the room we had intended to be in, and within three months were moved out of, and we just waited and waited and dealt with the small room in the meantime. That room's windows do not open and this and that, we had done tiles while we were in that room. We even did an award tile for a State Department award show, so we've done tiles in the building, but we could not properly ventilate, and we couldn't get maintenance on the windows and stuff. So I remember through the years, we've gone to town meeting to advocate for our director position, we've gone to town meeting to advocate for windows, which we still have no idea when that will come through. So there were limitations of the space, we're still, as tenants, what we had intended to do was still our intention. Later, Kara came into the position, she wasn't there in the beginning when we were in 809, and she told the whole building pretty much, you know, that wait list unfortunately is not really so functional, we're starting fresh. Anybody with complaints, because I'm sure there were plenty of other rooms with issues, you could address that in the next RFP process. So that would have been, we stayed in 809 and just dealt with it the best we could, had to shift kind of what we did, as well as then the pandemic fully hit, and all of our arts markets, our tiles were our full-time business from the time we were in our early twenties, until then we were in our late twenties, that is what we did. We've had a few different business names and different things, and the whole arts market scene, as everybody knows, was completely decimated. So even now, a lot of those arts markets, the 25-plus shows a year that we would do, they don't all even exist still to this day, or not to the same vigor and everything. So we rebranded during the pandemic, we only became and rebranded into High Point Vintage during the pandemic, not while our, like, the beginning of our original license agreement coming in. We had to shift with the times of things that were happening. Everything we do has always been preservation-based, so our tiles, which I have some if you want to see, preserve original vintage paper and ephemera over, embedded in a tile pretty much, so it preserves an original piece of town history. We do the old guidebooks from the 60s, Thompson's clam bar, maps, all different things, we've done backsplashes in homes, all different things. Our theme throughout with other items has always been preservation work as well, so vintage items, antiques, different things, totally cultural-based, and as that shift happened, I had approval to do what I was doing in the building. Actually, through the years, different people I know have come to the town to question my license agreement usage, and the town has defended me through the years in the past that I am under proper usage. Everybody in that building, whether you're a single individual artist, is a DBA, you are an artist, you are a functioning business still, not, maybe not everybody, maybe with the exception of a few, but that's my understanding of everybody's space. It's been clearly documented, we are allowed to sell out of our spaces, we do not hold store hours, we are not a store. A lot of people unfortunately have never even taken the time to talk to us about what we do, so there's a lot of just assumption. And yeah, so over the pandemic, we did shift largely into textiles and everything, but everything is antique or vintage, and we're studying, documenting, working with archives. We, at the last RFP, were not granted a larger room, so we just, okay, that's the car- okay, that's the charge we were dealt, that's fine, we'll stay in 809. As months went on, the tenant in 102 is an arts therapist. That room does not reach confidentiality. So, she charges insurance, talk about a business, she's a therapist, and she charges insurance and cannot have a confidential space. So, I know she was trying to handle that with our director about a space that worked for her. And over time, internally, tenants saw she wasn't really getting any resolution. I didn't even know her, and approached us and said, you know, you guys have wanted a larger space, she needs a private room, why don't you approach, you know, get to know each other, maybe you can come up with a proposal to bring to the town to swap rooms. So, we met and we discussed it, we looked at each other's spaces, we brought a proposal to Kara to bring to Joe Powers, and we were told that it will not go to Joe Powers, that we should do this internally. And I kept, I'm by the, I tried to do things properly. I just said, okay, that's okay. And it was very clear to me that our license agreements were to remain at our original rooms. So, the first person to call me was the other tenant after I received termination. And without, there's been like, kind of like a, oh, maybe I'm trying to manipulate the situation. I'm really not. I wouldn't want to be some public spectacle like this, it's been truly embarrassing. We are both under full agreement that our rooms were our original license rooms, because we, that's how it happened. I know that tenants sense, there's like many, not many, multiple other tenants that have swapped rooms. Some involve two people, one on either end, some involve one person in an empty room where there was nobody else to switch. I know of at least one of them that did ask for Joe Powers' approval, received it, but then the license agreement wasn't updated. And I know of another person who swapped rooms in August, Joe Powers isn't even a part of that conversation, doesn't have an updated license agreement. So, I'm just like, this is just a mess, that I wouldn't be here trying to resolve it if it were all just, yeah, you know, this is our license agreement, this is our room, this and that. On the other hand, the other tenant happens to, in her personal life, be nearing retirement and moving, and has offered to sit at the table with this whole discussion, to actually make a compromise where she could leave from her licensed room 102, I can't speak for her, obviously, at a certain time that would possibly work with the town, and we would return to 809 for our original license agreement, or there's other usage of the space. I know that everything's up for reconsideration come next spring with the new RFP. But, that's kind of where we're at with how we got there and our verbal agreement of things.
Well, no, we have, we have the director here. I think she, if you could, come to the podium, because again, this is, a lot of this is not, not consistent with, I think, the way the town viewed things. But I'll, before she starts, I'll just comment about, you know, the license agreement. It is to an individual, but I don't know how, it's a little disingenuous to say that they're not operating out of there as High Point Vintage. Clearly, they are. I mean, they have the sign on the front door, or just to the right of the front door, which is actually not allowed by the license agreement to put out any signage like that. So, and again, she's not an owner of High Point Vintage, right? But they're operating out of that space. That is clear, it's factual. There's no, there can't be any dispute with that. So, again, we, we need to take everything in context. And not to say that this stuff isn't, isn't curable, but we need to remain factual. Facts are the facts. So.
Yeah, I think in general, the situation has obviously become uncomfortable for everyone to get to this point where we are today. Things have been said, things can be related to a he said, she said conversation. But at the end of the day, the one thing I do want to address is the internal swaps, because professionally, I feel a little targeted when we start talking about this conversation. I think many in the public would agree with me when I say, and I can really remember this conversation, sitting in front of most of this board members, when we had the meeting of Take the Handcuffs Off, Kara Moini. And I still stand to this day, there is nothing that happens at the 204 that Joe Powers did not know about. Internal swaps always happen. If we'd have a vacant studio present, administration knew about it, because why? That means we're losing revenue, and we need to come up with a plan. In most cases, rooms would be held until administration decided if they wanted to use the space for minutes full use, i.e. lower level. That was terminated in the lease by the tenant at the time. It was a few months after we started the process in 2023. So, license agreements were introduced in 2022, just so that we have our timeline set. So, I started July 5, 2022. By August of 2022, I was in a conversation about license agreements coming, which is when, at a tenant meeting, I had addressed the community at the 204, to give them an update, to say, hey, things are changing, we're doing things that need to be done, the way the town needs to have it done, because license agreement for town rented property was necessary. By October of 2022, Joe Powers was in front of a tenant meeting, informing everyone of the process and what was going to happen. It was 2023, at that point, when it was announced, opened, and we were ready to go with how the process was. We know with any process, things are going to evolve and change, we learn along the way. We've learned a lot of things that we need to button up administratively going into the next one. But, there's a reference regarding a tenant that moved in in August. We knew the tenant was departing that studio in February of this year. So, although the perception may be that these moves take place during a specific time, that doesn't mean the conversation did not happen beforehand. A tenant in 105, we knew for a year and a half, she was moving out of Harwich. And the moment she bought and purchased property, she was going to be vacating her studio. So, a lot of these decisions don't come easy for a tenant in general, if they're terminating their license agreement. It takes time. Sometimes there's moves involved, retirement, or it's just not working out. So, the one thing I want to just evidently stress is, it's not an overnight switch. If a tenant had raised a concern regarding studio space, that meeting would happen. I believe I tracked it to on or about May 8 of 2024, that I called a meeting with Joe, and it was on or around May 15 of 2024, that I physically had my sit down with Joe to discuss a tenant concern, which was regarding the release of that. And that tracks in the line of, between June and July of that year, that swap happened, because on my financial sheet, that swap happened for my tracker and my studio audit. So, every month, I do a studio audit of the studios, just to make sure they're complying with the standard building regulations and fire regulations. We don't necessarily always go into studios for that. We can peek in windows, we can make sure things are up to snuff. And we're doing our part to make sure tenants are educated as well, because that is a big thing. We have tenant guides, we try to give them as much information to make sure they're being good parts, but we, as the town, are also being good parts with that as well. So, just want to make sure that's clarified, because there was nothing, and there continues to be nothing done in that facility, unless administration knows of it. And that is one big piece that I do want to make sure, because professionally, that is important to me. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions that the board may have, or if Tony has anything further that you'd like me to add.
Actually, what I was going to do is start with the board members, have a conversation. They can refer to anybody that they would like to, town administrator, Kara, or John, but, Pete?
I, I don't have any questions for, for any of the folks in attendance. I appreciate you being here. I can sympathize with your situation. But I think the matter before us, Mr. Chair, is, which individual has the authority to manage the license agreements? I think that's really at the crux of why we're sitting here tonight. And I, I would state that, on the, I'm sorry, I say 204, because I, I deal with numbers, and it's a zero. But I'll, I'll acquiesce to your 204 cultural use policy. And the, the last paragraph on page one states, the Harwich Board of Selectment authorized the office of the town administrator to approve and arrange for scheduling the use of the town old buildings. That alone tells me that we delegated the town administrator's office to handle such matters. So, I think this document answers my question, who has the authority to manage the agreements. Additionally, and again, nothing to do with who has the ability, but I, I believe probably one of the, one of the weak points or failures was to, to rent all the rooms. We clearly knew, as a town, that we were outgrowing this building. We, we were adding various departments, they needed a home to conduct their business for the town. And so, it probably would have been wise to, just to identify a few rooms over, in, in that building, that we wanted to preserve for future use. And I would argue that that's something we should still do. We should identify which locations are desired by the town. And then, when openings occur, we either can shift somebody to an open room that opens one of the rooms we want, or if it's one of the rooms we wanted anyway, then we do not lease it to another tenant. And finally, the, the last thing I'll state is, based on some of the, the comments that I've heard, it's probably appropriate to review all of the agreements, and I know they're coming up in July, or, you know, June 30.
They expire June 30th, June 26.
But nonetheless, it's probably appropriate to review all tenants, to make sure that they comply with the policy as outlined, and conducting the appropriate business within that building. So, because if I recall, sorry, if I recall, there were folks who wanted use of that building, that weren't able to get rooms, correct? So, it's not as if we're saying, we're just going to leave rooms empty. If, if it's not the appropriate business being run out of that facility, there, there are other people who potentially are appropriate or running an appropriate business that belong there. So, I'm off my stage.
If I could make my point first, everything that happens here, I'd like it be directed at the chair, and you get recognized, he gets recognized, everybody. So, go on.
Sorry, process-wise. In terms of proper usage of the space, I was very conscious of it when we were shifting over the pandemic to our main, we have multiple products, so we do still do tiles. We can't physically make all the tiles out of there, because our resin process still is not suitable in ventilation-wise for the rooms we're in. So, we, as individuals, have many different things that we do. And I definitely had work to make sure that what we were changing, the bulk of our usage of the room, that it was clearly approved. I was there when the Mass Cultural Council came through and did their walk-through of the building before the cultural designation was even given. They completely saw what we did, they were in full approval of it. Kara gave us, you know, highly, like, praised what we were doing at the time. And it was Kara and the town that came to me, spring, winter of last year, to begin the 204 thrift and flea market, which has been one of the larger events out of the building. So, it doesn't, it's not consistent that all of a sudden, we're not of proper usage, when we've been in conversation with the town about this, and actually, like, in partnership with the town doing this, and making sure that everything is based in historical cultural value. So, we've never been roundabout misusing the space without anybody being aware of that.
Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yes.
I apologize if you construed my, my words to mean you were not operating in an appropriate way.
No, I just wanted to clarify the relationship with the town.
Which is fine. I have no desire to identify if you are or are not, nor do I have any desire to identify any other tenants in that building, whether they are or are not operating appropriately.
It would be inconsistent if we weren't of usage, then why would we be in partnership with the town for the last two years on an event based on exactly what we do?
Again, not, not something I'm debating tonight. My, the, the task before us was who, who's authorized to manage this process. And that's what we're trying to, at least that's what I'm trying to decide this evening. So, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Kenea?
No, and I will agree. The document that I've got in front of me does state that the, the Board of Selectment authorizes the office of the town administrator to approve and arrange the schedules. I just have one question, and it just seems that, if there were swapping of rooms going on, are new agreements arranged or drawn up, that if one person swapped from, you know, 102, and they now went to 105, if that happened, are new agreements drawn up? Now, this person's gone to 105, and 102 has gone to somebody else, even though it's not come up for the annual review? Do you do that for a tenant moving rooms? That was just a question I'd have. But I would agree with everything that Mr. Rakarsky has said.
So, to answer that question under the former administration, no, that was not the precedent. That was not something that was tracked nor done. I will say that Tony and I already have a discussion that regardless of the new process, we want to make sure that's instituted along the way, so that we have that ironed out, along with many other things that we have been able to put into this future process. As far as license agreements, though, it's ironic enough, we did publicly put out AO2 and AO6, if I recall correctly. I apologize if that is wrong, and I'm trying to think of our map. But we had, again, internal swaps that took place from folks that vacated studios. Administration approved those internal swaps. They sat vacant for several months before administration decided we were going to go to RFP. So, back in May, I believe, of this year, the board approved two brand-new license agreements for a one-year term only. So, they didn't get a three-year like everyone else. They were just approved for a one-year license agreement, that would be just the same track as everyone else. So, through June of 2026. So, if we want to focus and hone in on the license agreement number, we, in theory, as a town, have two license holdees of AO2 and two license holdees of AO6.
Sure. Thank you for coming tonight. You know, the role, excuse me, the role of the select board is to set policy. And, you know, that's what we do. We, we don't know enough to get into the weeds to try and call laws and strikes. And that's why we have a town administrator, and we have a, a property administrator or director. So, you know, in my opinion, that's why we have professional staff. We're all amateur, I know, I'll speak for myself. I'm an amateur. I don't know all this stuff. But that's why we, we give a policy to the town administrator, run this town, take care of our employees, and do the best you can. So, for me, this is an easy decision. We rely on our town administrator and on our staff to make the best decision. I did see some letters come in that had some suggestions, but again, I refer back to the town administrator to try and do that.
Thank you. The one thing is that the precedent, or, there's not a whole lot of precedent, but that our awareness through any facility change in the building, Joe Powers had talked about multiple different plans in the past, and always deferred to the select board. And I have just a very clear understanding through the building, and there is an email going back, that anything that were to change in the building would go through the select board. So, I viewed this as, well, why isn't this in even involving the select board? And then, so, that to me is just like, yeah, I just thought that it did involve the select board, and I'm not the, like, I mean, I think most tenants thought that, so maybe that's wrong. But, we were told if facility usage were to shift or change, it would be with the town administrator, with the select board. And to keep an eye on the select board, so when I received the termination letter, I even thought, oh, wow, I missed something, because I don't watch every select board meeting. Well, it didn't involve the select board. And so, that's where my process with that specifically, I was under that assumption. And that if there's departmental changes happening, that that is also something I thought the town administrator worked with the select board to address. So, the fact that there's a lot of facility changes, there's terminations involved, and there's clearly moving of departments and different things, for none of it to involve the select board, like, just was jarring to me from the process in past years. And again, I've been a tenant for six years, so it was very surprising for me, because in the past, things have gone to town meeting, have gone to the select board. Maybe there's things I don't know of, but that was where our, my belief was.
Before I move on to Jeff, I just want to make a couple of points to you, that you're kind of missing. There's some truth in what you're saying, because the select board does determine appropriate uses and policy for how the building gets leased out, for lack of a better way of phrasing it. But you said you moved in when?
2019.
This is a different agreement than what you moved in with. So, things, things change, if you'll excuse me, if you'll excuse me, things change in these agreements. So, and also, the people who use the rooms change the use on occasion, which, that is an appropriate discussion for us, and it may result in us having to revisit everything here. Because I know that this agreement, which was the follow-on agreement when Kara came in, talked about distilling down what the appropriate uses are. And they're for the creation, for the creation, teaching and promotion. creation, for the creation, teaching and promotion of visual, performing, and/or literary arts. If that's not getting us to the point where we want, that's our job, to determine what the overarching uses are. The actual implementation of those things, because it does contain a clause in here that talks about use, you wouldn't know this, and I don't want to get too deep into the weeds, but Chapter 4 of our charter calls for the town administrator to be able to efficiently reorganize the government in a manner that he or she feels is appropriate for the current times. We're talking, all of what we've been talking about so far tonight, the majority of it is about you and about the building. The back, the problem is that this didn't start because of that. It started because of Chapter 4, and it started because of where Tony wanted to place that employee within the context of available space. That's our, that's our discussion right now. That has stayed constant throughout the both agreements, the original one and the current agreement, that we always reserve the right to use it for municipal use should we need to, which is why Pete came up with the thought that maybe we want to reserve a couple of rooms the next time around. That's an operational thing that's up to us to figure out whether we want to do in the future. But we have an agreement that's signed, and there could be, first of all, the agreement didn't change. This agreement is still the same as it was when you signed it, I think it was in 2023. So that's appropriate. People inside the agreement, however, may be doing something different than when they signed the agreement, and/or we may have different needs than we started out. So keep all these things kind of separate because they're not, they're not identical for us. You may be getting caught in the assignment problem, but we always had that right, and we still have that right, and we actually probably need to examine who's appropriately there at this level, but that's not a discussion that we can have tonight. When we, when we put out the license agreements next time, we're going to actually have to examine, is this getting us where we want to get in terms of the appropriate use of the building and how, and how we lease them out? So with that, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try to keep this brief. I see, I see two things happening simultaneously, and maybe I'm getting this wrong. We're talking about the need for town space, but we're also talking about the tenants' use of the space. Would that be a fair, am I, am I hearing this right?
I was trying to parse those out, so we didn't log them together, but yes, you're right.
Okay. So some of this information got to us Friday, some of it got to me today when I sat down. As I read, as I, as this first came across my desk with some letters, emails from residents and some people who are using the 204, my initial question was, the first, is, does the town administrator have the authority to, to take the action the town administrator took? And as I read KP Law's opinion, which I would like to have in correspondence next week, if we could get this in correspondence, so the, the public who doesn't have access to this can see it, as well as this, the cultural affairs building use policy, it is clear to me that the Harwich Board of Selectment authorizes the Office of the Town Administrator to approve and arrange for scheduling the use of town-owned buildings. That, to me, means that the town administrator has the right to take the action. However, when I look at KP Law's opinion, the Select Board retains authority to affirm the town administrator's actions or to take such other steps as the Board deems to be appropriate and is in the best interest of the town. So there would be the Board's intersection with this specific issue. So I think it's ended up in the right place, based on KP Law's opinion. Now, maybe the Board doesn't see KP Law's, sorry, Tony?
No, 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 I don't mean to interrupt, but the last paragraph, the attorney of KP Law did not have what you have in your hand. That's why he says whether the authority was expressly or implicitly delegated to the town administrator is unclear. Because at the time I asked that question, I didn't have that, I hadn't found that policy yet that you have in your hand.
This policy, the use policy.
The one that delegated to the town administrator.
Sure.
Yeah, they didn't have that, so I just bring that up only because part of what he wrote, he said it's unclear because he didn't necessarily have all the information on whether that was, the authority was either expressly or implicitly delegated.
And when you and I spoke about this, if you remember, the, the main crux of my concern was what is the process to handle this kind of situation? That was my main issue. I, I still think that there needs to be some discussion about that. I, maybe to clean it up a little bit. Thank goodness for the Charter Commission. I have a couple of questions. Are there any other, this, I guess, would be for the Director, Carr. Thank you for being here. Are there any other licenses or tenants that are in that building that are non-cultural or don't fit into the use policy?
So my answer would be no, but I'd also, that's where we go back to the question of the original license agreement, is what do you define as culture? Which is why the language was very specific about creating literary, public, performing arts and things like that, is because the challenge is how do you define what is arts and culture? Which is why we had to very specifically state, and the proposals that were sent in were asked those same questions. So what are you using this studio for? And then that had to be approved.
So is Mid Cape Church Homes a tenant?
I have nothing, my department, Department of Cult, so I do understand.
I'm just asking about the building.
No, it's a great question. So the Department of Cultural Affairs has no license agreement or awareness of the agreement between administration, as that is former administration, to Mid Cape Homes Church.
Okay, thank you. Second question. How, Jana, how would you define your partnership with the, the admin, or the department head of the 204 building over the last year?
I mean, we were approached, this was like winter, spring of 2024. The idea was for Art Week of last year, that we could begin and kind of a pilot program of, we, our, our work is largely based in markets and stuff. So same as with the tiles, we did 25-plus art shows a year. Then, as our product shifted, but still includes tiles, we do other markets. We do Brimfield, we do other, just all different in-person markets. So we work from our space, we go to markets. Knowing that we have professional relationship with markets for over 10 years, the idea was to start a market in the building where we would invite 10-plus local vendors from Cape Cod to highlight the art of curation of vintage and antique items. So half of them are clothing-based or textile, half of them are what I call stuff, your classic kind of antique dealers and odd and ends items. And the relationship was like great, it's been great. I was not aware of any negative anything at all. We meet after every event and everything. This was not something that I even came up with. I actually said that I do not want to get into the market of running, the business of running a market, because I have no interest in that and running a profit-based market. So this was a positive relationship with the town, with the community, keep it affordable.
Thank you. And the only reason I ask that is because there had been mentioned about, and I'll quote from the policy, item number two. Space rented at the 204 Cultural Arts Municipal Building is not intended to be used to operate a business. Any renter seeking to use the space to run any part or portion of a business must get special permission in writing from town administrator. It seems like there's other, I guess you'd call them licensees, who are operating a business in that building. So then I would assume by default that there's paperwork giving them the approval to do so somewhere.
So to answer that, I would say, you could say any one of them is considered a business. We allow any one of them to sell during open studios. Any one of them can offer commissions and have someone come in and work through that. Those are made by appointment. As far as businesses goes, I could name several that go by a business name, and they teach classes, they teach workshops. If we're speaking specifically to the event that they have had great success with, yes, it was deemed to be a partnership from the beginning. There was also a second tenant involved in that partnership, and we moved on from that. But the 204 and the department always supported that as what we like to call a signature event, meaning it routinely happened on a reiterating basis.
And I understand that, and thank you. I'm just trying to understand better, and to Pete's point earlier, I think a larger discussion needs to be had about all that's going on. Because at the end of the day, if, if there's a, if there's another licensee who's operating a business, which in my mind would be simple, it's an exchange of funds for a product that's being made or, or being, or being taught, then it goes to my first question, which is, are we here to get in the interest of town space? Or are we, or are we discussing the appropriate usage of, of the person, the two people sitting in front of us? Now, that--
Before you go on with that, this was not determined based on the use that they are putting the room to. It is determined by the need for the town to occupy it. There is another discussion to be had--
Sure.
--about what the appropriateness is and whether some of the licensees may not be adhering to that appropriateness. But they are not being singled out because they're conducting a business.
So that just brings me to the next, my, my final point, and thank you for that, Mr. Chair, for bringing that up. So would they be allowed to go back to their other space if the other tenant would relinquish a 102? That would be, my, my final question is, if, if the tenant in, in AO9, I guess we'll call it the swap tenant, would relinquish 102, do these folks have the opportunity to go back to AO9?
So I think, well, first of all, to answer the question related to, so this is a, a second-order thing, right? So that's why I wanted to do the chicken and the egg, you know, discussion. The other stuff about the appropriate use and compliance with the provisions of the license agreement and the RFP was a second-order effect because of all the stuff that was put in writing, put in the newspaper, right? It forced the town to start looking at things, right? And so, you know, it wasn't like, well, gee, I need to go through the whole building. Now, at the end of the day, we may need to go through the whole building, and this could blow up the whole thing. But it's a, but it's a second-order thing, and I think we still have to have a discussion about, you know, the use of the space, who the licensee is, what, you know, what they're operating under. Because what they're currently doing doesn't fit at all in terms of that. Now, I'm not to say that others may not be doing something similar, but the whole decision was, this came up afterwards, right?
Right.
And so I think it goes to a bigger discussion about just, you know, how do we get back, everybody back to center in terms of how they're, you know, utilizing the, the building and the spaces? And is there actual creation going on inside of the space? Again, I think a reasonable person right now, for whatever the reasons are, in Kara's offices right next door, there, there's not a lot, there's no creation going on in there right now, right? And there has been for a while. When I asked, how often do you see the tenants? Maybe once a month. Now, prior to right now, because they're there a lot, because there's a lot, you know, things are going on with what's, what's happening. But, but prior to that, there are sign-in and sign-out logs and, and all that kind of stuff. So I think it just goes to trying to cure these things, right? What I would, to answer your question, the town is not opposed to working with them to try to cure some of these things, to get back to, to center, right? So the question will be, what's the appropriate way to do that? I do not think it's to move the person from AO9 back to 102 and have them vacate. That, I, I don't believe, again, any reasonable person would have thought the swap was anything other than permanent for this round of license agreements. So I do not think that is the solution. There may be some, some opportunity. If, if they're planning on leaving early, then, you know, we have to figure out the timing on that. And I mentioned to them, I'm willing to work with them on the timing. Nobody's trying to, you know, pick an unreasonable date, saying, well, if it's not December 1st, it's going to be December 15th, right? I think we're looking at sometime in probably January, and so it gives us some opportunity to time to work with them and others to see if, you know, an appropriate solution can be met. But again, cure some of the things that are a little problematic. And if we have to go from this one to the next one, you already mentioned another room that somebody has, that's not her problem, it's on my list, right? And you probably know why, right? Doesn't fit. How did that happen? I don't know, but I'm going to find out.
Yeah, and to your point of compliance, I'm all for it.
Yeah.
I think whatever, whatever this says is what everyone in the building should be doing.
Correct.
Period. Now, I don't know whether or not they're in compliance or not in compliance. It's, as Pete said, no interest in knowing that. That's what the Director's for. That being said, you mentioned, you know, the, the first order of business, the second order, then the, then because of this conversation, there's now a third issue. And it, this could be a, a threat on a sweater, and I don't want it to be. I, I want the cultural center to be the gem it's supposed to be and, and, and operate in a way that's beneficial for everybody who's using it in compliance.
Right.
So that's, that's my position on it.
Right. And when I talked to the tenants the other day, and again, I don't know how many were there, but there was a good number of them, and I, I kind of talked about what Selectman Rakarsky, Rakarsky brought up. Because again, the town always reserved the right to utilize the building for municipal use, right? However, the first time we tried to do it, here we are, right? And so I told them, I said, the risk with that is, when the next round RFP comes out, it may be, it won't be me, but there may be a recommendation that we only rent out 30 rooms and not 36, right? And now you're going to have six artists who don't, won't have a place to work in because we mightn't use the space next year, the year after, they could sit vacant for years. Versus, we all have an understanding of what, you know, that this possibility exists, and part of it may be to identify, as you brought up, identify those rooms ahead of time and make sure it's completely known to the people that go into those rooms, that those rooms have already been pre-identified for potential municipal use. So that we do provide the maximum number of rooms for people to work in, but they know ahead of time, those rooms are already on, you know, on the town's list if we, if we should need them. But again, there's risks with that because as soon as you try to do it, you may end up in the situation we are right now. So the, the town's kind of caught between a rock and a hard place to try to do a great thing with what goes on in the building, and at the same time, making sure that we're being cognizant of, of our operational requirements and necessity. Because we have positions we're trying to fill right now that do not have an office of any type. And so this, and again, we frankly, and probably everybody can figure out, it's the Alborough House. It is not a suitable place for municipal office space. It just isn't. Environmentally, everything you can think of, it's just not the right thing. And we have three employees in there. Don't have to move them out all at once, but we need to pick away at it and see what the future of that building is, which will probably be something the Board would, would deal with, but--
And to your point, first of all, it's going to be an agenda item in the future, the, the second broader point. Because with or without Tony being in that seat, we're still going to be issuing not licenses again this coming June, so we're going to wind up having to have a clear picture of what our objective is, how it in writing appears. And I got to say, especially having done contracts for a lot of years, you're, you're not always on target. That's why when, when you do contracts, you, you try to learn from what went wrong because there's always a possibility of a dispute where somebody reads a contract clause one way and you thought you meant it another way. That has to be tightened up, too. I mean, it's pretty clear that we got ourselves in, to that situation, at least in part, through this, but it wasn't primarily aimed at that. Once we got to the point of wanting the room, the room was identified first, just to make that clear to you. But we, we have to be able to go a little bit deeper under the surface because people's use of the rooms over the, over the last few years may have morphed. And we need to be able to have some enforceable language that says, this is what we intended by that building. We definitely did not intend to start competing with, you know, people who are involved with the Chamber of Commerce and are involved with the fledgling other group that is in Harwich Port, because that's unfair to them, too. We have to figure out where that line is because you would essentially be having a storefront for about--
But I don't, that's what I like to hear.
For about a third of the cost of any reasonable retail space. For about a third of the cost of any reasonable retail space, your generic operation. We, we need to figure out where that, where that line is, because you may be able to settle on teaching or promoting, but you certainly aren't in the space right now. The majority of what you do is not creating in that room.
Has anybody asked me? That's what I'm like, everything has been an assumption or a, a projection of
By percentage of the square footage, I was in that room myself last week.
There's items in, the majority of items in there are not for sale. And currently, I mean, it's embarrassing that I have to even say this, we're working on a photo book of an archive. Like, I don't know why there's no respect to actually even know what we do. We do not run a store. We very clearly do not want to run a store. Like, that is not even our goal. So it's, it's just a shame that I've made sure every step of the way, as our life has shifted and changed, that our director is in awareness of what we do. As much as my, my door is open to whoever wants to come and actually talk to us about what we do, we're not a store, flat out. We sell things at marketplaces at times, just like any artist, candle maker, whatever, takes their items and curates their stuff and goes and sells at other places. That's where we sell. We don't even sell, once in a handful of times out of the year, we take a few appointments, mostly from people from Japan who come to Cape Cod to come to our studio. So I don't understand why there's not just more of a conversation about what we even do before there's just a projection where it is clearly
Again, that isn't the primary reason that we're even here tonight.
And I wouldn't be here if the proper documents were pulled to terminate the proper room. So that's why I came to the Select Board.
It's irrelevant, because we need that one room, and that was established by the town administrator. So I'm not going to go any further with that discussion tonight. What we are going to discuss in the future is the difference between curate and create, because I think that's a blurry line that we've discovered in this whole operation. But at the end of the day, unless somebody's willing to make a motion to override the town administrator's decision in this
Well, I would just, my point
Excuse me. The meeting is still mine to, to, to run, not yours to go on. After we leave this building tonight, this is going to fall back on the town administrator to determine what the appropriate date is and what the appropriate discussions are, unless the board overturns his decision, which is really what I'm asking right now. Does anybody want to make a motion to do that? Okay, so the, the, I, there isn't going to be any way of adjudicating this anymore. It's a quarter to 10, we've spent quite a bit of time.
But my question is to do with, how can you terminate me from a room that I do not have a legal license agreement from?
You're occupying it.
But
You're occupying it, that's how.
I mean, I've talked to counsel that has said nothing in the license agreement
Well, then, have counsel call us, but we're done.
But that's, I'm just confused by, I don't understand that.
Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, the five o'clock alarm will ring.
Fortunately, other items did go before us that were supposed to be after us tonight.
The agreement, the agreement states
We set the agenda, by the way.
The, the agreement states, and I think we've all agreed, that the, the policy authorizes the town administrator to arrange and schedule the use of the property. The agreement states that the town shall have the right to terminate this license for no reason whatsoever without recourse, provided the town gives at least 30 days' notice. I believe those things were done. I do not want to minimize the impact on your business. However, the, the process is outlined in our documentation. I believe the exercise before us was to confirm or to identify who has the authority, which we've done. And again, with the hour, with all due respect to everybody, I'd like to move along.
Okay. Again, we're not, we're not voting to overturn them, there's been no motion.
I understand that, I just, I'm confused moving forward, even with the administrator, if my license is valid for another room and vice versa with another tenant.
Occupancy in that room is going to be terminated because it's needed for municipal purposes. You need to discuss the particulars of that with the town administrator after this meeting, because I believe he gave you an indication that he wasn't going to hold to the date that he put in the letter. So there is a discussion to be had. But the discussion doesn't revolve around musical chairs, where you're the last one in a room and somebody left it and they're gone.
Well, that's a legal
That room is what you occupy, that room is what we need. And that determination has been made.
I understand that the legal documents do not add up to me, I don't under
There is a legal document, you signed it.
You signed it for a different room.
You signed the same terms that every room in that building has.
I understand that, to me, it's a process.
That allowed us to pull back a, a room for municipal purposes at the discretion of the town administrator. I'm sorry, we're going to have to move on.
Mr. Chair, can I just make two points regarding some items that the board will be discussing in the future?
Yes.
The first being the license agreement. I met with Joe back in January of this year to discuss the timeline of that next process, and that is something already predating this whole situation. Tony is aware of, and that is something that I will begin with him, with recommendations back to you, as I have done with all of our room rates and everything else in past. And then this facility use policy predates me. The only thing that had ever changed on this use policy was the name of the building, and that was it. So I certainly was addressing this with Joe back in January, when we had that same conversation about, hey, license agreements are coming up, what's our timeline? Because it is a process, that this use policy truly needed to be very accurate and very detailed in respect to how it also aligns with the license agreement, as I also too found some gray areas that I would like, as the individual that has to file them, that these are situations we, as the town, should have. So those are two points moving forward for the board to look forward to. I had already anticipated that was going to be January of 2026, to be back in front of you with not just the license agreement, but also the newest market analysis for rates restructure as well, because that is all encompass, it's all one package. We're not just talking one thing, as we will have several meetings regarding many of those avenues and different respects of the building.
Okay. In the meantime, please schedule the time to talk with Tony about the particulars of what the date is. Because that's something that is available to you as an option right now. He's already said he's not going to hold you until December 1st. So that's a discussion to be had. And we are going to have a further discussion about the license agreements overall, as Kara suggests. But I thank you for coming in. Okay. You want to, you want to hold off on the town administrator, assistant town administrator recruitment, or do you?
No, it, it should be short. So I, I mentioned this briefly at a prior meeting, but it wasn't on the agenda. So I just, you know, the board had cooperated with me to go ahead and start the recruitment for the assistant town administrator. I happened to have a phone call with our consultant for the TA search in hopes that, you know, if he knew anybody or that might be interested, and he said, that's probably not a good idea. And so we talked through that, and I think it's two-pronged, and we talked a little bit about this in the pros and cons, but I think he stressed a little bit more and started to click a little bit more from two standpoints. One is, at that level, even somebody coming in to be the assistant town administrator is going to want to know who they're going to be working for, who their mentor's going to be. There's an immense amount of trust between a TA and an ATA to function, you know, synergistically, if you will. And so that could potentially have, I'll say, a detrimental effect on the ATA recruiting pool. But by the same token, this is an opportunity that, I'll say, high-functioning town administrators come in, you know, looking to come into a new community and having the ability to hire their, their second for those very same reasons, so that they meld together, they build that trust and, and all of that, and could have a, you know, an effect on that, that recruiting pool from that standpoint for the, for the TA side. So if you remember from the timeline, you know, at the very earliest, if everything went perfect, I wouldn't expect to see this person, if I hired them, to be coming in until, you know, sometime in January, which, and I think the board received an email from the search consultant, it's probably around the same time that we expect the new administrator to be here too. So I think with both of those things, we've obviously lost a couple of weeks already just to, because I felt professionally responsible. What I didn't want to do was go and recruit it, and then, you know, somebody say, well, what'd you do that for? I told Tony not to do that, you know, it wasn't a good idea. So professionally, I needed to, to at least put those ideas out to the board for you to make a decision about move forward or, or hold off, and, and what the implications are of doing either one of those, you know, two things. So certainly take a little bit off my plate, but at the same token, I think it probably makes sense to let your new town administrator, you know, pick their, their second.
I, I stand corrected, the two gentlemen to my right who originally wanted to take that, that course, and Rick actually said to me that there's, there's several candidates who expressed explicitly that they would like the opportunity to pick their second.
New information, so it makes sense.
But I know that I was a guy who convinced us to go the other way, so I'm sorry, but it seems like that's appropriate now to go this way.
I think it makes sense.
I'm born on it, to be honest with you, but I'm, I'm not going to fight it, you know, I, I understand the logic behind it, but I also understand the clock's ticking. Tony, you might have been a little optimistic about the new TA in, in January, I think that is, about when we start to interview. So, and then there'll be a whole selection process, and then a, probably a notice given to current employment. So anyway, I'm with you, but I think it might be a little bit longer. My only thought process is this, what, if we, if we settle on a new town administrator sometime in January, and we know that person has whatever, call it 30-day notice to their current employer, assuming they're currently employed, then perhaps we put the notice out to recruit the, the assistant town administrator and with the applications due when that individual starts. So at least we get the ball rolling, as opposed to waiting for them to come on board, the TA, that is, and then posting it, and now we're another three months out before, you know, we have people in the door. So just my thought.
Well, that sounds reasonable to the extent that we're not committing ourselves to picking somebody.
No, no, it would, essentially, when we knew when the new person would be able to start, would be the timeframe for those applications to be in.
Yeah, and I actually had that situation when I went to Ashland, right? Because the, the office was cleaned out, right? So, but the person that was the interim, we coordinated that together, right? So that ad went out, but I was the one that ended up doing the hiring, even though the interim was still there.
Yeah.
We, you know, so that, that can work as well. We just need to look at timing-wise of when we would put that out. Probably be like in the beginning of December, because you don't want the ad sitting out there for too long and people's applicant, because they may be looking for other jobs. So I can certainly talk to Rick about that. Makes sense to me to perhaps consider doing that, but let the, the new TA, at least the process is going. You've already approved a job description, you already chose, chose the salary range, it's just really putting it out on the street and getting the resumes in and letting the town administrator interview and, and select his, his person off of that. So again, the only
Short answer is yes.
Yeah. The only downside is they still won't know who their boss is going to be, so we'll, we'll time it so that
That's what I mean, it's all about timing, right.
It's all about timing, yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I want you to approve a contract with Abeven Associates Architects for Engineering and Architectural Services, Brooks Academy Museum, in the amount of $197,600.
Second. I've never seen you make a motion to spend money.
Well, it's 10 o'clock, and I want to
Any further discussion hearing, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. Town administrator's Cliff Note report.
I don't have any more words. Everything, everything's going well. The only thing I would say real quick, because I do have something to say, and I, I know we'll have more discussions on this, and I didn't bring it up at, at the time, but I think we've got to be very cautious about some of the suggestions about putting stuff into the operating budget at a time when we're looking at potentially taking things out of the operating budget, simply to, to save free cash. We've got to be careful where, we need to set where our priorities are, and I think the board has adequately stated that in terms of focusing on our people and, and everything else. To have non-operational expenses in the operating budget, because it won't go to free cash is, you know, strategically is, you know, we'll have more discussions with them about that, but I, I feel strongly that we're moving in the right direction on some of the things we've spoken about as a group. Because we do have some, some potential challenges as we look to settle contracts, school budgets and the like, so.
And we will have that discussion. All I, all I want to say to that, that is that we did approve a budget statement, it did talk about looking from within, and it also talked selling our union contracts, so we have to be cognizant of that, and that cannot be free cash.
Right, so.
Pete?
And although I agree with, with the town administrator, I think it's a process that we can take over time. It doesn't have to happen in this one particular budget. So I think, but, you know, it's probably a direction we want to head, but we can slowly get
We've got a couple more hours, you want to talk?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have two quick things. One, and I don't know where it is on your radar, but
Radar is busted.
Clearly, clearly in November, so a, a follow-up discussion on, on the revolving funds, the review and analysis and potential changes to
Favor to mine.
And the, the last thing I'll say is, I appreciate that you, Mr. Chair, and, and Tony will be part of Veterans Day ceremony tomorrow. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend, and so
Push and look for you.
Don't look for me, but I wish you both success and luck, and I'm sure the weather will be tremendous, and
Yeah, right, the last, the last one, when it was raining, I was six foot two when I started, and after I dried out, here I am.
I need it.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mark.
I'm all set, thank you.
Jeff.
I got
No!
Age three? I got a couple things. No, the only, the only thing I, Pete reminded me, I will be driving the golf cart tomorrow.
So I will see you.
You will see me shuttling people at the Veterans activity there.
You in charge of the canopy for us, too?
No, I, no, it's going to, I prayed for sun, and motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Folks may want to check their health, health benefits before they get on that.
Yeah, great.
Second?
You can't second.
There's a second to the motion.
I made the motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?